I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, June 27, 2017. Laura, could you please call the roll?
Belval.
Here.
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening, those of you joining us in person and those of you watching at home. I remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. We begin our meeting by welcoming our interim superintendent, Dr. Cynthia Stevenson. We're glad to have you with us, and it's your chance for your first superintendent's report.
There we go. First of all, I just want to say thank you. It is delightful to be here. I am thrilled to be part of Boulder Valley. As most of you know, I was in JFCO as superintendent for 12 years, and I'm quite amazed that in a week, I feel like I have an awfully lot yet to learn. So, that's what run the process up. So, I'm very pleased to be here, and I'm honored to talk about Boulder Valley School District. And after my appointment last Monday morning, I drove, I dove right into meeting with district staff and community partners to gather information and begin building partnerships. That same day, I attended a quarterly meeting with officials from CU Boulder, City of Boulder, and Boulder County. They probably wondered what you all had been thinking when you hired me, because I knew very little at that point. But they were gracious, and it was fun to be there. I learned a lot about how our four organizations work together on important issues like capital improvements, growth management, transportation, and of course, education. And Tina and Leslie joined us, and it was great to have you with us. During the month of July, my leadership team and I will work diligently to prepare for the coming school year. Hiring is still taking place to ensure schools are fully staffed when students return in August. IT is taking advantage of the summer break to do a lot of big projects, like changing phone systems. I want to personally say thank you, I'm just beginning to figure it out, changing the phone systems, and getting ready for all of those children that are going to come back very soon. Business Services is closing out the fiscal year and preparing for the 2017-2018 school year. Bond construction is in full force to get buildings ready to open their doors. As you already know, three of those buildings are brand-new: Douglas, Emerald, and Meta Larkin Erie. My commitment to you all and to the Boulder Valley School District community is to do everything I can to lead this outstanding district through this time of change with the goal of avoiding interruption to the important work of learning. While I know this change is hard on some people, my goal is to make the transition as smooth as possible. Boulder Valley School District will continue to be a model for Colorado in providing the best public education possible for children and young adults. We will continue to be outstanding in the world of school districts. And every day, I will celebrate being here. I will celebrate the joy of being an educator. There is just simply no better work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stevenson. Any questions or comments for our interim superintendent? Kathy?
I just want to say thank you, and I really appreciate your choice of the word "celebrate" because I think there is a lot to celebrate, and we look forward to working together and celebrating together. So, thank you very much, and we hope to be helpful, as helpful as we can, in going forward. Thank you.
Hey Kathy, other questions, comments? Jenny?
Welcome aboard, Cindy. We're really glad that you're here, and I share your confidence in our staff. This is a great district, and we have the best employees who I know are dedicated to the well-being of our students, and I include everybody from, you know, people here at the Ed Center to people on the ground at the schools, no matter what their jobs.
Thank you, Jenny. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is public hearing and public participation. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Please limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Board president may interrupt or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. Here is the lighting system on the podium. Starts at green when your two minutes begins, turns yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turns red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. We'll go first to speakers on agenda items. Gwen Apple. Thank you, and good evening and welcome.
So, this is my first time here. This is where I stand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We're glad to have you here.
All right. Thank you very much. My name is Gwen Apple. I am a parent of three children in the Boulder Valley School District. I have twin first graders who are Crestview Elementary School and a third grader, Sylvia, who's sitting here in the audience today. I'm here to speak to you about the budget proposal that is up today that Ms. Benford has put forward for an additional $1.2 million for dyslexia screening and intervention. I strongly support this measure. I, my understanding is that currently, there are three board members who are supporting this measure, but it needs a fourth to pass, and I'm strongly urging one of you to please also support this measure. My daughter Sylvia, this past year in third grade, was still struggling with spelling. Her reading was always just passable, or maybe just a little bit under. She had some really good teachers, some really caring teachers, but they did not recognize the signs of dyslexia with Sylvia. So, in our first conference, we had a conversation, and that conversation was that, well, she knows she'll catch up, and, you know, maybe we'll do some phonics work with her. But it still wasn't getting better. And finally, by January, we'd had enough, and we decided that we were going to go ahead and do testing independently and pay for that out of pocket. As it turns out, in fact, Sylvia does have dyslexia, and we are now paying a private tutor. After having intervention through school that did not work, we had to go to private tutoring, of which we're paying $900 out of pocket. We are fortunate enough to be able to do that, but I think of Sylvia's classmates who are not. I urge you, please, to think about all of the students at BVSD who need to have early screening and then intervention, because not all of the parents are going to be fortunate enough to be able to recognize the signs early, and it is a wait-to-fail model. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Trout, who's been given an additional two minutes from Sylvia Pugh. Ms. Trout, good evening. Welcome.
Can I speak now? Okay. So, my name is Karen Trout. I've been advocating as a parent of the administrative chain at BVSD for five or six years now. I've sat in years of committee meetings, like you. I have been in SAC and years ago, DAC, where I even heard Mr. Messengers say that literacy rates in our district hadn't improved in 20 years. This is the second generation in our family that proves this district has been failing a certain section of kids historically. I have volunteered on the Literacy Intervention Committee meetings for 18 months, which amounted to nothing. I am now on the Dyslexia Advisory Team, and I also attend the CDE's Dyslexia Focus Group meetings for the next 18 months. As a response to the dyslexic issue, the CDE department has created this Dyslexia Focus Group because that is an indication that they see this as a problem. My older child has had the typical experience of non-identification of the warning signs, inappropriate intervention, and then no intervention, until he did wait to fail enough, and then entered 4th grade and qualified for sped reading, three full grades below grade level. Even then, all he got was reading aloud to a parrot educator. This is a typical story, and I know this can be boring. Sitting here recently during budget meetings and hearing BVSD administrators give misinformation as facts, and literacy materials being pitted against the needs of those who can't read feels like a symbolic battle between those who can read and those who aren't able to read. Well, I felt like I was on an alien planet, not one that had just been given an extra $8 million by Boulder voters. I have one neurologically typical kid and one neurologically diverse kid. My typical kid could honestly have learned to read by himself, by giving him, yes, just write books, or being motivated enough to read, buy a great book, or simply reading more. My neurologically diverse kid would never learn to read without being identified and giving a multisensory structured literacy program. This is about kids who can't read. They just need to be identified, but iReady is not identifying them. In the CDE meetings, the discussion is about too many false negatives. There are thousands of kids in your district who are not learning how to read when they need to, or in time to access general education, and certainly not to grade level. Since we are accepting iReady, let's look at the scores. Forty-six percent of 5th graders are reading below grade level. That is not a success story, is it? I don't think the answer is to do more of the same. We need to identify the children who need help, and iReady isn't doing that. Now on the horizon, there are some changes. I would like to thank Dennis Rastatta and Michelle Branna for their leadership and integrity. Now, thanks to some funding, sped teachers are going to get some multisensory structured literacy materials and training. Good, because there is a disproportionate amount of kids with dyslexia, about 1,000 and more if you count those with ADHD with reading issues in the other health impairment of the IEP in special education. Those dyslexic kids who have failed enough to get there, do you think they will ever catch up? I wonder if they will graduate and join the only 74% of sped kids who do. Thank you for the first time in living history of BVSD for allotting some funding for this huge issue. Is this amount you are allotting reflective and meaningful for the thousands of kids in the district trying to access FAP? I have heard promises of money that will be there next year. If you can foretell the future with that much certainty, that's great, but I do not want kids to play the lottery again and lose again. Fund the full amount for thousands of kids in the district and have enough funds to roll out a three-year plan with certainty. You have the chance now and the power now to actually make a change. Sitting in all these meetings for years to come has to have some action. Let's face it, the world isn't getting any easier to live in. Take action now to change things this year, today, not next year. Kids are waiting, and I would like a chance to celebrate success for them, too.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Busey. Mr. Busey, good evening. Welcome.
My name is Michael Busey, and I'm the parent of a 4th grader with dyslexia. Tonight, I would like to discuss the subject of iReady. When we first heard from the district that intended to use iReady to screen for dyslexia, we immediately began researching it. Through open records requests, we found some pretty shocking data on the district elementary literacy letters, levels. According to iReady data, students below grade level for 2016-2017 show an increasing trend from kindergarten through 5th grade. Kindergarten, 26%, first, 34%, second, 32%, third, 31%, 4th, 39%, and 5th grade, a staggering 46% of our children are below grade level. The June 27 BOE update on literacy fails to mention this disturbing trend. As a COO, one of my jobs is to look through reports like this to find issues beyond what the report producer wants me to see. This board should be receiving annual reports that show year-over-year, grade-by-grade reading scores. The targets for districts should be to improve reading scores every year in every grade level and measure them transparently. Our issue with iReady has never been using it to gather general reading data, like I just mentioned. It is that we have received no evidence to suggest that it is able to accurately identify children with dyslexic profiles, especially in kindergarten and 1st grade, when it is most critical to do so. The state of Connecticut specifically excludes iReady from their list of tools to identify dyslexia. We even wrote the publisher of iReady for their position, how it could be used, accuracy and evidence. We received no reply. The screener discussion has dragged on for years. The Literacy Intervention Task Force discussed it for a year and a half with zero results before being disbanded. In an April 29, in an April 19, 2017 RFI response, the district states that iReady will be used as a, quote, "initial identifier of potential dyslexic characteristics," and then more specific assessment tools will be used. This is a different position than what was given to the last Dyslexia Advisory Team meeting. We were made to believe that a screener would be given actual consideration during our next meeting. It seems to me the decision has already been made, which is why there's no money in the 2017-28 budget for a screener. The idea that we will waste another year discussing it in committee before implementing a screener in 2018-2019 is simply unacceptable. I have my comments and everything I referenced for the board members.
Thank you very much. That concludes the speakers on agenda items. We do have one speaker on a non-agenda item, Sue Hirsch. Although you may in fact be speaking on the same item. Welcome. Good evening.
That's okay. I'd like to start with thanking the board for your continued efforts to deepen your understanding of dyslexia. Tonight, I'd like to remind you of the effects dyslexia can have on self-image. If children succeed in school, they will develop positive feelings about themselves and believe that they can succeed in life. If children meet failure and frustration, they learn that they are inferior to others and that their effort makes very little difference. Instead of feeling powerful and productive, they learn that their environment controls them. They feel powerless and incompetent. Researchers have learned that when typical learners succeed, they credit their own efforts for their success. When they fail, they tell themselves to try harder. However, when learners with dyslexia succeed, they are likely to attribute their success to luck. When they fail, they simply see themselves as stupid. Research also suggests that these feelings of inferiority develop by the age of 10. After this age, it becomes extremely difficult to help the child develop a positive self-image. This is a powerful argument for early intervention. So, if you had the opportunity to add a screening tool for dyslexia to your iReady assessments, knowing the consequences to these students if you miss them, why wouldn't you? If this increased your ability to help students with dyslexia receive the structured literacy instruction they require, why wouldn't you? And I really encourage you and hope that you will continue to ask hard questions and answer this, and have the literacy department answer these types of questions to your satisfaction. My student started out similar to the woman who spoke first, and as a junior at Boulder High School, she dropped out at the end of the year. And it all started at Crestview in 1st and 2nd grade.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. That concludes the speakers who have signed up for public participation. Thank you for being here. The next item on our agenda is board communication. Board members, who would like to begin? Nobody has anything to add. Tina?
Yeah, one thing, I'll follow up with Cindy about the meeting we had with CU and the City of Boulder. Again, it was a great meeting, and Cindy, contrary to what you said, I thought you were great. So, and it was always nice to see our partners at CU and the City of Boulder, just to think about what's coming up. And then, I just want to thank the speakers who came to talk more about dyslexia. It's been, you know, I feel like we're on this journey together, sometimes together, sometimes apart, and I always appreciate what you have to share and the dedication of the advocacy. I feel, I'm very excited that I think we're moving forward in a lot of ways, and one is a cultural shift where I think we're recognizing dyslexia and using the word dyslexia. One thing we didn't do as a board, and I wonder if it's something we should have done, is what a couple of other school boards have done in the country, started with a resolution that was a little bit broader, that just said, okay, this is what dyslexia is, and we're committed to identifying and intervening, and then seeing what happens and tracking that. And some boards have left it at that and then just, you know, had the staff do it. We've gone a little bit more into the weeds than a board normally would, I think, and I think that's been tricky because it's gotten to a level of detail that as a board member, I feel less comfortable. I don't feel as comfortable directing programs to staff, and that's not what I view as my role. I also don't think this is, but that all being said, I feel that there's a lot of efforts going into training and professional development on dyslexia, recognition of dyslexia, and I think that we're funding a consultant whom I'm hoping will be able to talk about the screening opportunities and looking at what our success is with this iReady proposal that might be in conjunction with a secondary diagnostic of dyslexia, but also looking at other alternatives and considering things like pilots. You know, we don't have to do everything at once, but we can start exploring and looking at other things. And I'm hoping that with an external consultant and possibly an external moderator for the group, that we can get a little more consensus so that when we go down this route and continue to spend this money, I think right now we're at $850,000, that there's some consensus and some feeling of a shared success for our students when we do this. So, so those are just some thoughts I wanted to share. This is, obviously, we're just taking a month break. I'm sure we're going to be talking about dyslexia again on August 8. And again, I just want to thank all the advocates from BV Kids. You've helped me in my understanding. I feel like the budget is somewhere close. It's not exactly where you want to be, and I recognize it, but I still think our students are going to be better served. But I also think we need to do some more work getting consensus on where we're heading and how we're going to measure what we're doing. Thanks. And that was a little long. I apologize for that.
Thanks, Tina. Any other comments, board members? Jenny?
So, Kathy, Kathy and I were fortunate to accompany Leslie Arnold and Melissa Groom today on a tour of the summer school, and Cindy, of course, on a tour of the summer school program at Monarch K-8, which was, I'm really excited to see what we're doing. I know you rebooted the program, especially at the elementary level, and created a new atmosphere of excitement among the students, a lot of hands-on instruction going on and making it fun for kids so that they actually want to turn up. And I am hopeful that the results we get, however we choose to, and I think when you presented, you also said that you had added some new metrics for measuring success. And so, I look forward to in the fall, hearing more about how that program did. I'm optimistic that we're going to see real growth in our students. It certainly is a wonderful program with really dedicated teachers and enthusiastic kids.
Thanks, Jenny. Any other comments, board members? Kathy?
I just want to echo some of Tina's and Jenny's comments. I want to thank the parents who showed up today to advocate for their children. I think over the past few months, these parents who have been tireless advocates for their children, their children are very lucky to have such advocates who are taking the time to come and advocate for their kids, and not just their kids, but all of the kids who have dyslexia. And I want to echo what Tina said. I feel that I clearly, if you've listened to these meetings, I'm not an expert on dyslexia. I am trying to figure out what the best policy route is going forward because I believe that's what my job is at the board level, not to decide which program is the best program. I've tried to educate myself by going to schools and talking to people, and I think we're making a good step forward. It's clearly not the last step. It's clearly just a beginning step. I share Tina's hope that an external evaluator will help us guide our course. I know there's been some email criticism of our spending dollars on that, but I support that. And I also want to thank people who aren't in the room who've taken the time to write and share their stories. They're heartbreaking stories, and I feel personally badly that we aren't able to serve every kid immediately where they are and get them to what their fullest potential is. But we are working hard on that, and I just want to thank everybody for your advocacy and your efforts in this regard, and to ask you to continue because this will be a long journey that we, not hopefully very long, but a journey that we will go on together. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Any other comments, board members? Shelley?
Yeah, I agree with our speakers, and thank you for coming tonight, that the district should be doing more to help our students who aren't reading. Later tonight, I will be proposing an amendment to the 2017-18 budget that includes full funding for dyslexia awareness, screening, interventions, and professional development. I'm recommending this course of action because a number of studies have concluded that structured literacy helps all learners, including ELSL and dyslexic students. So, I hope that the board will support this level of funding that I'm recommending. It's not dramatically different than what we've talked about, and I believe that it's what, it is what it will take to make a difference. So, thank you to all of you for educating me on this subject. I had no knowledge of it before you started to come to speak to us, and because of you, I've done a lot of research on my own and talked with people, and I'm convinced that you're right, and I'm convinced that the experts that have come before us in the last couple of year, last couple of years, and who have attested to what you're saying are correct. And I feel like the district's already using screeners in some cases. They're already using Orton-Gillingham in some places, and this is not something brand-new that we're talking about. It's just a matter of making it more comprehensive and catching more kids in that supportive net so that they're not failing, and we're not letting them down. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Shelley. Any other comments, board members? Hearing none, that concludes board communication. We'll move to the next item on our agenda, our information item, 7.1, the 2016-17 literacy update. Welcome, Leslie Arnold, Angel Stobach, Ron Cabrera, Jonathan Dings.
Mr. Fuqua, I have an introduction. Can I do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. Then I'll do our introduction. Board of Education members, tonight, we have our annual report to the Board of Education regarding our literacy progress during the 16-17 school year. Tonight, we will share our results against our UIP literacy targets at both the elementary and secondary levels. Additionally, we think it is informative to remind ourselves about the Boulder Valley School District literacy program components as well as its philosophy. You will also hear about the anticipated work for the 17-18 school year. Tonight's presentation is broken into two parts. Leslie Arnold, Assistant Superintendent of Strategic Initiatives, and Ron Cabrera, Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services and Equity, will share the Boulder Valley School District literacy goals for this past year versus our UIP goals. They will share their analysis of the current state. We will invite questions after Slide 6 for 10 to 15 minutes about the broad patterns in the data. Angel Stobach, Director of Language Arts and Literacy, will present about the Boulder Valley School District literacy approach, including the various interventions that are in place. Lastly, Dr. Jonathan Dings, Executive Director of Student Assessment and Program Evaluation, will be available, if needed, to provide additional detail on the data. So, I will now turn the presentation over to Leslie and Ron, with your permission. I think I have it. Okay. Leslie and Ron.
Thank you, Dr. Stevenson. President Fuqua, members of the board, good evening. As Dr. Stevenson said, we are here before you to share some results around our literacy approaches and progress against our UIP goals. We really are anxious to share them with you. Along the way, as outlined, we would help everyone to gain some understanding of our literacy approach and the interventions that are in place to certainly assist all the kids with needs. I think there's obviously any number of understandings that need to occur during the course of our program. I hope we can do that. And then, as, again, I'll reiterate that Dr. Stevenson indicated, we want to have a pause, make this somewhat inter- make this somewhat interactive, invite your questions because we know you have them, that we think it will help provide clarity as we go along. So, I think it begins, it needs to be said, literacy plays a foundational part in our educational program. We always have to answer the question, why? And if indeed, the mission in the Boulder Valley School District is around having children thrive and prepare for successfully specifically engaged lives in our society, it means that they have to be literate. And so this, I think, always provides import to our work in the course of the district and obviously helping all kids arrive at a level of great deal of success. So, at this point, let's talk a little bit about the results that we have received based on our assessments. Leslie?
Great, thank you. So, for the past two years, we have focused specifically on these two elementary Unified Improvement Plan targets and goals. And literacy has always been a goal, I think, I believe, in every school's universal improvement planning process. But for the last two years, we specifically asked each school to be thinking about increasing their average reading proficiency and decreasing the percentage of students that are shown to be significant reading deficient. It's okay, I got it. So, the two goals, I have two slides to talk about these goals. And the first thing is that you're going to see over to the far right, that both of our goals for this year, this school year, we did not meet the intended goal. This is by no way satisfactory to us or to our team, to our principals, to our teachers. But what we're trying to do now is to really think about the why and then the what next and what do we need to be doing. So, we compiled this data to look at the 2000, from 2014 to this current year. You can kind of see that we have some fluctuation in the scores of the K-3 students aggregated together. This is not broke out by grade level. These are the K-3 students from our elementary schools. On this next slide, what's different is the purple components of this. And so we did do, we were able to do some disaggregation of the data, looking at specifically our free and reduced lunch students and our English language learners. So how you read this slide is really by thinking that the FRL percentage and the ELL percentage is the percentage of all FRL students and all ELL students. So, for the goal not met on the far right side where it says 67% goal not met for a free and reduced lunch, 37% of all FRL students in grades K-1, 2, and 3 did meet the standard. And 27% of all ELL students met the standard. So before I go any further, I wanted to draw your attention to a, kind of a last-minute document that we provided and it should be at your seat. It is, it shows a very, I think, in-depth kind of look at all of our schools. And it's based on all of our elementary schools, excuse me. And so this side shows all the elementary schools and it has for the three years of data. So you can kind of look and see what are the percentage students that have met and the changes in the deltas, et cetera. This isn't, we're not ready to necessarily speak about specific schools today. We didn't invite principals to address this or we don't have school leadership here tonight to talk in depth about this. But we wanted to make sure that you had some of the data that kind of compiled and comprised of the pieces of information that you're seeing on the screen as well. And the other side of our, of our component here, of this piece of paper, is the spring performance and the national comparison, and Ron's holding it up, just on the flip side of this. We wanted to give this to you as well tonight to maybe start answering some questions that we've received through correspondence to you, that you have forwarded to us, as well as any questions that you may have. And what this is, is this is publisher provided to us just recently. We don't, even though it says page 11, we don't have the specific book that, they just cut and copied this for us for this presentation. It is the spring performance versus the national comparison for BVSD. This is broke out by each grade level, starting at kindergarten on your left, going all the way to eighth grade. It's kind of fuzzy and I apologize for that, but if you look underneath, it shows the count for each grade level as you're kind of reading left to right. And you can see that this is for mid and on-level placement or higher on the spring diagnostic assessment for iReady. And so this is BVSD in blue versus in gray, the national comparison of students that use iReady and took the test in the spring.
So I guess I would note a couple of things as you take a look at that particular data because it's been referenced to you during, even this evening. In particular, you'll, it's just because it was noted fifth grade. You'll note that 54% of our students met or exceeded the standard. The national comparison group is 25%. So, we're not pleased, as Leslie indicated, in terms of overall results, but across the board, on a very rigorous standard, you see that BVSD students are exceeding the national comparison group to the extent of almost two times the amount when it reaches fifth grade. That's sort of the good news, not the news that we wanted, actually. I think we always try it for 100%, but give you a context of an assessment tool with publishers establishing a rigorous standard. We'll speak more to that, I imagine, as you ask some questions. So, if we can transition now to the secondary improvement portion of the UIP, the Unified Improvement Plan. You see the goals before you and I need to make a note because while you have on one hand, a copy of iReady scores for some secondary students, this tool and our UIP goals really was using a different assessment tool. It was Reading Plus. And it's because when we initiated this initially, Reading Plus did not go down to kindergarten. It kind of bottomed out at third grade, but it went up to secondary and had some other activities or tools available to students who needed support. And it was not part of the approved assessment tools by the Colorado Department of Education. So our secondary schools have been using that. During the course of our Read Act implementation, iReady has now gotten, so it can move through the upper grades. And so it's our intent that as the cohort of students who have been involved with the Read Act go up to secondary grade levels, beginning in sixth grade next year, across the district, we'll be using iReady. But Reading Plus will continue to be the tool that will be optional in nature until, frankly, the Read Act cohort continues to move up through high schools as well. So, the data you see here is representative of the Reading Plus tool assessment. Keep in mind also, it's for those kids who are identified below grade level to begin with. So it's not all students. We did have a target of 53% of our students per Reading Plus reached a 1.5 years of growth during the course of this year. We didn't make it. Again, we're not satisfied about that. We always feel like we have some kids drifting, that's not a good feeling. We did have 50% of the kids have 1.5%, excuse me, yeah, 1.5% of years of growth. And that's certainly up from last year. Last year was only 45%, but we had created a bit of an ambitious target. Overall, on average, kids who assessed using Reading Plus made 1.4 years of growth. It should be noted that kids who start at a low place obviously evidence greater growth, more evidently than those kids who may have been just under the bar, if you will, and try to grow 1.5 years. So, this is something that we're going to continue to work on. Some of the things that we think have been helping us along the way is, you know, we've had, mind you, we've had some things using English language, anyway, just a blank, English Language.
Arts.
Thank you. English Language Arts Cohort. Every time I think of ELA, I'm thinking of English Language Acquisition, but that's because of a different district I used to be in. So, English Language Arts, we have a cohort working with master teachers with example classrooms, so other general ed teachers can observe what's going on around literacy practices, language arts practices, help support those kids. Our interventionists are setting goals with our kids who are below grade level. We are also utilizing Reading Plus because they have some software program within that has lessons and activities to help provide support for kids in those areas that have been targeted by way of the data. So at this time, we'd like-
We're going to open it up for questions before we proceed because we'd like to get the questions about the data.
Yes, thank you. Questions, board members? Richard? Which one?
I'm guessing this one.
I want to go back to your slide where it talks about the FRL and ELL students.
Yep.
You have 37% FRLs and 27% ELLs. Did you say didn't meet or met?
So the first, okay, so the first row is students that met iReady or iStation's spring grade level targets. And what that's showing is that for FRL, that's 30%, 37% for the 2014, 37% for 2016-17 of FRL students, the total amount met in K-3. The second line is indicating the significant reading deficiency, that we're trying to make this a lower score. We're trying to reduce the number of students that are significantly reading deficient.
I guess the question on the significant reading deficient scores, the students are identified as early as preschool or kindergarten?
Kindergarten.
And have you explored a little bit more in terms of why you think they come in with significant reading deficiencies? Is that going to be part of your presentation tonight?
Well, actually, I don't think it is so much, Richard, but I can probably express some information on that.
Well, I can express my opinion on it too.
Right, right.
I think I know what it is.
I mean, I think obviously we're talking about language development and vocabulary development deficits that they come in with, you know, beyond, if you're FRI, obviously the research is really clear about the amount of language development that seems to be lacking. We talk about the 30 million word gap and that often is-
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So-
Everything that El Paso does, by the way.
Right, right. And so-
And Paso. And I want to make sure that people know that because these are the programs that are community-based programs that are learning and working with families.
Right.
Because usually what happens is families don't have the information that they need to be able to work with their kids more significantly at home.
Agreed.
And I can tell you that the schools are not going to do this job by themselves unless they start involving the families of these particular children. And I can tell you that the FRL and the ELL kids, if you combine them both together, you're really talking about the Latino kids in Boulder County, in Boulder Valley School District.
There is combination in the populations, Richard, you're absolutely right.
Pretty much, pretty much the same population.
They're close together.
And if I look at this other one here, where you look at the different schools and I start seeing where the schools are at, where they're low scores, I know where those schools are at. I mean, I don't have to, I guess, I'm a little bit frustrated in hearing this particular report. How long have we been doing this type of work and why haven't we had any improvement? I guess that's my biggest.
So, let me just say, and you're going to hear about-
Frustration.
It's probably actually another report at some point about talking about our strategy around ORACY, which is around language development and language fluency that we've been doing in collaboration between the literacy department and our English Language Development Department, Richard, because I do think that there's increased practice needs to occur. I think the whole reason that we have a Director of Parent and Family Partnerships that we brought on two years ago was to, and join the very families that you've talked about, that El Paso, El Paso is doing. So, we commend those efforts. We've got to join arms around it, I agree.
Thank you, Richard. I understand your frustration. Other questions, board members? Kathy?
How were the targets chosen? The 2% increase and the 1% decrease? I know we didn't even meet them, but they seem really modest and I'm just wondering how those were picked.
So, that was the district target. So each school in the Unified Improvement Planning process were, we had put out that they needed to do five percentage point increase for each of these years. And so what we were hoping is that we knew that there would be some fluctuation, that the district then decided to do a 2% as an overall aggregate. But each school had the same goal.
So, you're right, it seems kind of incremental in nature. And I, so if we were to talk about variation and how much growth you could, you obviously, I guess we'd have to ask Dr. Dings to come up here, but it gets kind of technical. Obviously, as you can see, it ain't that easy, unfortunately.
Other questions on the data? Tina?
Yeah, so my first question is on the handout, on the spring national comparison. Does this account for the differences in the FRL populations between BVSD and the nation? Okay.
No.
All right. I would just caution that a little bit when we use national comparisons because I think we're at 20% FRL. I think the country's at 40%. And I just get, I've always been nervous about comparing us against Colorado as a whole versus using disaggregated groups in which to draw, you know, to kind of say, oh, this is what we're doing well, what we're doing better. And I understand we have to start somewhere, but this is something I really struggle with a little bit, especially because we know where our issues are. And we have a lot of different issues as any school district does, but I think that's important. And the other, so you mentioned ORACY and I was reading the, there's a presentation on dyslexia on the CDE website. And one of the things that this person talked about, this is sort of a little out there so you don't necessarily have to answer, but they talk a lot about with effective differentiation, about time on task. And I'm just wondering if, when we're working on literacy, but in middle school, we're switching to, or we're including ORACY, we're adding this ORACY component. And I'm thinking, how does that, how does the time work when we add ORACY while we're trying to get the literacy targets? Does that make sense? So how are we getting the time on task to make that growth for the kids who are really behind?
Would you like a response from our Director of Literacy?
Sure.
Okay.
A document that we've put together for schools to use is an observation tool where we are looking at students that are new to English and how much time is spent on ORACY, conversations, that's discourse regarding content area. So, conversations that's helping them to learn the content as well as time on task. So it is something that we are investigating. We do have a tool that we can share that shows that, but we are looking at literacy as being reading, writing, speaking, and listening, which overlays with ELD, English Language Development, reading, writing, speaking, listening. So we're trying to find ways to do some comparing and look at time on task, oral, speaking and listening time on task, as well as writing and reading time on task.
And so how would that be reflected in an iReady score? And I'm not, but how would that, would we expect, because our time dedicated to language arts in middle school hasn't changed. So, is that-
Are you wanting me?
No, I'm just-
Yes, so it is, we would expect that as students are using the vocab, oral vocabulary is increasing, that they're transferring that into their reading and writing as well. So we were looking, as I worked with the ELD director, we were looking for ways to combine the oral language development and the speaking and listening and the reading and writing with an expectation that that would increase our reading scores.
And is that a pilot or did we implement that across the district at the same time?
No, it was a pilot. And we've put it in, we've used the observation tool mostly at secondary, but also in a couple of elementaries.
And could we sometime get a report on what the outcomes were from that pilot?
I'll work with Kristen and see with Jonathan how we can pull that data because schools, the observation tool, when you see it, it doesn't always, it's anecdotal information, qualitative information. So it's not necessarily by certain score, so we'd have to look at how we can quantify the information to share.
Okay. And then another question I had was, we adopted iReady, I think, five or six years ago when the Read Act.
Four.
Or four?
Four years.
Okay, four years ago. Have we taken a pause just to reflect on how iReady is working for us and whether it was the best choice or whether we need to look at other screeners? And that's just out of curiosity, not, I don't have an agenda, I just, I'm wondering because, and we, because when I remember when we adopted, it was with a pretty high level of reluctance and it was a pretty rocky rollout, so.
When we went through the adoption process, we took every assessment tool that was on the Colorado Department of Ed website that was on their approved list. And we did a thorough analysis of how it can be used for instructional purposes as well as reporting purposes. And we have that, that we can share. It came out, it came out relatively high in comparison to other assessment tools. We invited vendors in as well. We invited community members, we invited staff members to take a look at the ones that we narrowed to, to select iReady. We have a contract with them for another two years, so within the next two years, we will have that opportunity to go back to the- will have that opportunity to go back to the list that CDE has for approved assessments that can be used for REACT in order to, to see, is there something else out there that we would recommend, that we would want to shift to, or would we want to stay with I Ready? When we've done comparisons of I Ready with PARC data, there's a very strong, very high correlation, I don't know the exact, but there's extremely high correlation between the assessments.
The other component around it, because it's, it's technologically implemented, kids respond to it, so that was going to be a lot more, a lot less time intensive than what we'd been using in the past, which was the Development Reading Assessment, I think, tool, which was one-on-one, and, you know, so we actually had, you might recall, we actually had a testing assessment days set aside to get all these kids through, and it's a very time-intensive, though, we like it. We like the personal touch. So it was culturally a change, at least for a year or two, just to use IRI, or excuse me, I Ready, yeah.
What we had in the past, teachers sat one-to-one with students, and it was a conversation, but it only analyzed a couple of the components of reading, vocabulary and comprehension. We wanted a more fully, more robust assessment that measured more of the reading components. So I Ready did have the phonics and the phonological awareness assessment that our assessment prior didn't have.
Did most districts go with I Ready in Colorado?
It really varies.
It does.
And I have a listing of the major front-range districts, and some went with two or three different assessments, some went with one. It, it varies.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Tina. A lot more presentation to come, board members, but if you have questions on the data particularly, Jenny?
So, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, we've done some rolling out of Barton and Orton-Gillingham this year, and I'm wondering if we're seeing the results of that in some of our year-end assessment data?
We probably have to ask Dr. Dings to respond to that.
I told you I'd come up with a question that only you could answer, Jonathan.
That'll actually be on one of the slides.
So later, so you're putting me off on that one? Okay, that's fine, that's fine. And then I was, you referred to this already, but I am curious if we also are using PARC data and maybe even ACT data to measure the literacy levels in our students, and, and that would be my question.
Well, certainly, one of the things that we had conversation, as we took a look at the results, is, is saying, all right, we're displeased with what we see, given what we had anticipated, and we also needed, so we said, we need to take a look at other types of data that also can paint the picture. And so you just proposed one. I actually hadn't thought of that one myself, but we were thinking of other types of things that we need to take a look and perhaps drill down and take, look at different student cohort groups that are moving along also, which might address some specific populations and the like. You want to add to that?
I think one of the problems that we have in looking at PARC data, especially as we get into older grades, is the participation rate. And so, we can make some inferences based on some of the scores, and PARC, like I Ready, have high standards to meet, and so we can use it as another body of evidence. It's tough for a school to kind of look at it as a whole school when their participation is falling below the state acceptable level.
I would think that ACT might have, provide some interesting literacy data for the high school, because I would assume that most kids take that, most...
Yes, we're moving to SAT.
SAT.
Yep, no, but I, we have ACT historical data that we have used in the past, and moving to SAT, I'm going to look at Jonathan, because one thing that we have is the PSAT that we had, but last I had heard from Jonathan, is that we had lower participation rate even on that.
Oh, really?
I think that's still holding true.
It surprises me a little bit.
Kathy?
To the slide with the purple numbers and letters on it, do we have those same numbers for special education?
I don't think we pulled those at this time, but...
Could we get those?
Yes, so, we have to do, as Dr. Cabrera, Cabrera had said, we have to do quite a bit more of a data dive into this. We're not just looking at FRL and ALL, those were some of the quick things that we were trying to pull out. We were also trying to see cohorts and looking at from spring to fall. And we noticed one thing with this year's data, is that our students in K three consistently started lower than they did the previous year. So they had pretty much the same kind of growth component and achievement component, but they started lower. We don't know why, because we need to go back and look at how they left their previous grade and the score that they had, and then when they came in to take the fall data in their new grade, it seemed to be a lower starting point than when they left it. So, we could look at summer learning, we can look at different things that we need to maybe address differently in the summer as well.
And I would just like to see those numbers when you have them on special ed, too, so...
Yeah, I, I think we're anticipating to come back in early fall to, after we've disaggregated, to kind of round out this conversation.
Thanks, Kathy. Tom?
So, obviously, it's concerning here that, that we have a decline in our proficiency of our, our reading of our students. And I, I don't know if you're going to touch on this later, if you are, just tell me you will, but why is that? Have we diagnosed this data enough in what we're doing and looked at the programs that we're using to find correlations as to what's happening here?
So I'll start, and I'll let Dr. Cabrera. So there's a couple of things that we didn't have really enough time to prepare for, for this meeting tonight. We just received this information maybe a week to ten days ago, and so we haven't had the deep dive, and then we had some people, of course, going on vacation that were helping with this. But one thing that we really wanted to talk about, especially as a leadership team, is to start thinking about the, kind of the data talks and the data pieces that they do in the building. So after the fall data scores, what type of information are principals talking with, with their teachers? How are they looking at that data? Are we doing shorter types of data talks around data and thinking about what kind of instructional improvements we can be making? So, we don't know the answer to that, because we haven't had an opportunity, DLT is done, we haven't had an opportunity to meet and talk with our principals, we don't have our school leadership cabinet members here tonight, so we weren't able to get that information. But these are things that we definitely have to look into.
Yeah, I think, Tom, I could just interject, please.
Yeah.
You know, so we haven't received some other data. I'm curious about, though, you would argue that may not be entirely valid, is kind of triangulating some of the things against some other standardized tests such as PARC. And so, we have greater participation, actually, I was just looking at some, this, today, because you sent some questions our way, Tom. So, you know, we haven't, while we don't meet the ninety-five percent standard, a participation standard, even in fifth grade, I saw it was ninety-one percent, and it's around eighty-seven percent in, in middle school. I think we can begin to see if, you know, how we're doing, and we've got to compare it to some of this more formative data that we have here, the interim data, and kind of see what we're doing. Now, I guess I would say, first and foremost, I'm dissatisfied like you. I really am. I have great ambitions, I think, I'm dissatisfied like Richard, because I'm really holding, and my best hope is that the collaborative work that we're doing beyond the things that, as they alluded to, combining the efforts with our English Language Development Department and our literacy team, particularly beginning at the elementary level and some are, are kind of cohort groups that we have, that we've developed as part of our work that were recommended by Ed Northwest, will take hold, and will have great acceleration for those kids that are chronically on the bottom, and will have to grow itself up. We did some things also in our, in our UIP that speaks to meeting the needs of our second language learners, including things like sheltered instructional approaches across all content areas, and so we have kind of begun to initiate more of that training at a school level, and so we can hopefully get, bring teachers up to that speed to kind of begin that type of a language development, better vocabulary, and then consequently, we think it will manifest itself in these types of tasks.
Okay, relative to the questions I, I sent forward today, that was, you know, I guess prompted by email we got from the community. And, and they, and this individual had actually put in some more data that's not in your package here, from, from CDE. And it was, you know, it looks like you can go on CDE and find this information, like I've done it before, it's a performance by school and grade, and that was part of the attachment on here. So, so the, the question I have here is, is we're, you're talking here about K through three, and if my recollection is correct on the data, statistics is that, is that we really want our kids to, to learn to read by K three, because if they don't, what, what we see is that they just decline and go farther and further behind.
You're right, it is a challenge, you're correct about that.
So that's really where I concentrate on getting them to read. And, and our scores, even though they're declining, they're, they're higher than they are for the other grades. And, and what was shocking to me is that, so grade four goes down to sixty-one percent proficient, grade five fifty-four, grade six forty-five, grade seven forty-seven, grade eight forty-three, and grade nine twelve percent. I mean, that's shocking. Is that data correct? I mean, can you comment on that?
I think what we can comment, certainly for grades one, K through five, that we are assessing all the students, okay, at least once. In grades six, seven, and eight, it's a skewed population, because we're only assessing those kids who came in who were below grade level. So it's not all kids. And remember, this is I Ready data that you see here, not all schools used I Ready. Other, other schools used reading plus. So, unfortunately, I would tell you that this isn't probably comparable in terms of making those judgments. With respect to grades K through five, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll read this, and while I heed Tina's caution about using comparative norms or national comparison groups, I mean, I guess I'd say, you know, I had this conversation and just say, you know, I'm not sure what grade level is, but I know against the comparative group, using the same, same standards on assessment, we're doing well. Not best, you know, but we're doing well, and so I guess, I, I would need more data and triangulated to say just exactly how, how much effort we need to do to kind, keep pulling it up. You might recall, before we got into PARC, you took a look at the TCAP data, particularly in math. You know, the math scores across the state were, at secondary level, pretty atrocious, pretty atrocious. And Boulder Valley, I mean, we were like fifty percent percentile, sixty, and relative, they're extraordinary, and I tried to understand that. So, the standard had been set at a very high bar about what meant, what it meant to meet the proficiency level. So, those are the things I think we need to wrestle with. I'm probably the wrong person to speak about that, because, you know, you're really tapping into a really shallow end here, but Jonathan could speak more to it, but I think you're raising the right question, Tom, and I think that's the part we want to...
Yeah, and I understand this data is just coming available, and you're, you're rushing to try to understand it. And I think it would be important to come back in early fall, and as you've had time to digest it more and look at root causes and to report it to the board again, you know, what you found out from this data, and, and, you know, what are the plans going forward? And, and I have some questions related to that, Sam, but they're not about the data. Should I hold off on those?
Yeah, why don't you hold, because there's a lot more presentation.
Okay.
But thank you, and I agree that some interpretation coming back to us as soon as it can be gathered would be important. Any other questions on the data piece, board members? Jenny, and then Richard?
I forgot to ask if we're also keeping track of the measurement of our growth in our talented and gifted students, and whether their literacy numbers are also, whether they're also showing growth.
I'm sure we'll have to dig that up. We don't have for you today, Jenny, so reasonable question.
I would think that would be an important, I mean, just, I, I think that's an important thing to keep track of as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Richard?
Yes, when you're measuring the, the reading scores for English language learners, are you talking about measuring English reading scores or English reading, or is that their native language reading, or...
These scores are English reading scores.
So when you're trying to measure, let's take a first grader in terms, are they at grade level at first grade reading, and you use an English language reading instrument to measure that for English language? How does that work? I'm trying to figure. No wonder that you have such a significant...
Right, well, certainly in our bilingual programs, the three that are elementary use I Station that helps capture kind of the Spanish literacy. I think it's my understanding, they also do the assessment for I Ready, so we can capture both, because that's what needs to be reported, if I get that right.
Right.
It's in their second language, though, not in their first language.
I, I would add only that we, that we do have, in fact, schools setting some targets in kids' native language, so we, so we do recognize at the level of the particular school that improvement that's being aimed at in bilingual programs is in Spanish for folks whose native language is, is, is that. But, but the measures we report here are in English, as Ron indicated.
So, do you have any way to determine whether... I went to go visit Columbine, and I did see, or at least I had an explanation from one of the describiendo lectura teachers, that, that told me that she used Orton-Gillingham approaches to work with our English language learners. To what success, I don't know, but do you have any information around...
I don't have that directly, Richard. We could certainly bring that, try to gather it for you.
Because if I look at the approach to Orton-Gillingham, and I look at the structured literacy approach, where you're not just using words, but you're using other types of approaches, that I think would be very beneficial for our ALL students to, to get more of that, I would think.
Thanks, Richard. Other questions at this point? If not, thank you for, Jonathan, yeah?
So if I could just say that, in terms of transition, Sam?
I think Jonathan had one more point to share. Thank you.
So I, I just wanted to speak a little bit to the question that Tom had, had asked, just so you, just so we're playing on, what, what part of the pattern we think in here is a, a pattern that's a question about changes over time as kids get old, older? And what I would just pose is that the, the, the pattern I see here is a higher standard over time, up until you get to sixth, seventh, eighth, eighth grade, and then we're not looking at all of our, our, not, not everybody's using the same measure, so we have to have some caution there. And you mentioned some scores in grade nine that are based on a very, very little number of kids. So, while I, I agree totally that there's a lot of work for us to do to understand these scores better overall, I would, I would argue against the interpretation that we get worse as we get older, that in fact, kids do, do, do well over, over time relative to a changing standard that gets harder. So I just wanted to sort of pose that, so that as we're thinking about what we're going to get as far as more information, that while we can re-explain this, the, that, that pattern won't change just because of the nature of the, the harder standard that's set over time by the publisher on this one.
Sam, just, just a question on that. They may be getting better, but is the process faster? I mean, so, so a child that comes in with significant reading deficiencies at the kindergarten level, and the right remedy is not in there, let's say, for example, and that child is not progressing, and, and that gap gets wider, how soon can that gap start getting narrowed so that we can actually say that by sixth grade, this kid is really going to be up to, to par in terms of reading?
I would really like to answer that question with data, which I, I don't have off the top of my, my, my head, but the question about how English learners do over time is very pertinent, and we will marshal these and other data for the next time we talk.
Thanks. I guess hearing no further questions at this point, please continue with the presentation.
So, this transition, we would like, and we think it's beneficial, so I have a good understanding about the literacy approach and interventions that are tied into it. Angel Stoban, the Director of Language Arts and Literacy, will present that portion of this report.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to talk more about our programming and shifts that we are investigating and have made. So, as we look at Boulder's model for instruction, we do use what's called an interactive model for teaching reading. There are three models... There are three models for teaching reading, and those are top-down, bottom-up, and interactive. The top-down model has a focus on comprehension and vocabulary development and students using prior knowledge when reading. The bottom-up model has a focus on the print on the page and letters and sounds. The interactive model in the center, the one we use in BVSD, stretches to include all five components of reading, including phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. And from data analysis, our teachers need to adjust their type and level of instruction. A question asked of the board today was why we were using this model. We want to share that we value supporting students learning all of the components of reading when they need it. So we want to continue to use this interactive model, yet need to support our teachers to be proficient in using it. To effectively use the interactive model of reading, teachers need to continuously analyze data. As part of our UIP goals last year, we instituted data cycles to support teacher knowledge and skill to analyze multiple types of data. So what data do teachers use at this time? We've mentioned I-Ready. We also use a, a body of evidence. Teachers have these assessment tools available to them so that they aren't using one point of data to make instructional decisions, but yet a body of evidence. We ask that teachers use these tools, and again, these are the ones we currently have, to ask the questions, what are the students' strengths and what are their areas of need? I-Ready is our screener for Read Act. It is not a dyslexic screener. The company has said that, CDE has said that, and Boulder Valley has said that. It is a screener for determining students' reading in the twenty-five, twenty-fifth percentile and below. It is the assessment tool that has been on the approved list for CDE. Teachers currently use it to track achievement and growth. And as stated, we want to further delve into the diagnostic aspects of this tool. There's so much more within the tool that we can make, make use of. So, and a question that went to answer a question that went to, that we received from the board today. We are not recommending a, a separate diagno, a separate diagnostic dyslexia screener for every single student. What we are, and the reason for that is that consultants that we have just met with consistently recommend not screening all students. The recommendations have come from the Colorado Department of Education, from members of the Academy of Orton-Gillingham, from the International Dyslexia Association representatives, including Bruce Pennington and Fletcher. And their recommendation is that we use our Read Act screener at first and then support students through an instruction and assessing cycle to see which students are at risk, then continue to test and instruct those students. We are interested in looking at having a secondary screener for our students that we are seeing are, are struggling beyond the screener from I-Ready. We're also seeing varied, various types of legislation. This addresses another question that we received. Various types of legislation from states discussing dyslexia. Colorado does have the Read Act legislation where we do screen, and again, we're screening for students that are below the twenty-fifth percentile, twenty-fifth percentile or below to then treat and test that group and continue that cycle. BVSD does follow our state legislation. We're also working with the District Assessment Committee on common assessments and want to expand the tools that teachers will have access to, to use. What are we asking teachers to be proficient with? Using that body of evidence? Those multiple assessment tools to assess? And then plan instruction for varied groups? And to ask themselves, what do all students need? And provide that through that whole group instruction? What do some students need? And what does an individual student need? Teachers during the literacy block have time then to, and opportunities to practice what they are learning in that whole group, small group, and individual conference with the teacher. We ask that the teacher then continue the cycle of assessing and reflecting and asking questions such as what has been learned and by whom? What still needs to be learned? And what, what new skills are needed, looking at the curriculum to determine where students need to go next? And this is a cycle that we ask would continue. We know our teachers need support with this. We know that we're not all there. So part of our work into next year will be continuing to offer support for the data cycle process. Teachers' understanding of all of the components of reading is critical, and we've developed professional learning opportunities to support teachers in gaining this knowledge. Some of this, of the work that we have created, we call the top three. For each component of reading, again, phonics, phonological awareness, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension, we've created professional learning sessions on high-leverage instructional strategies that we ask each teacher to delve into and to implement in the classroom. We've also developed this framework on how to include the components of reading within a literacy block and especially supporting the teachers in understanding and how to incorporate the components that they're most unfamiliar with, which is phonological awareness and phonics. Note that this is our new framework, and you'll notice that within whole group instruction, there are foundational skills where we would expect teachers to focus on, phonics, phonological awareness, and fluency. And also then, in small group instruction and independent work time for teach, students, there's times where the teacher would pull students for that small group targeted instruction in the foundational skill areas. And then time when all students are focusing on independent practice. And again, teachers would use multiple forms of assessment to ensure that students are gaining skills in all of the components of reading. We've worked with the principals to train them on this framework, and schools have been shifting to it. We also know that adopting learning materials that would provide instructional guidance in all of the five components of reading would be used well within this framework. Another newer aspect of our model is the development of a district MTSS process. In past years, each school determined the length of time and the types of assessments and interventions to use. We have centralized the structures so that we can develop district-wide agreements for providing a multi-tiered system of supports. The formal layers of supports that we've been able to afford and offer are LLI, ELA, Reading Recovery, DLL, and BARTON. As we look at our data there, we see that in leveled literacy intervention, we have that in thirty-two of our schools, seventy-six teachers have been trained over the course of time, and this year we served one thousand sixty-four students. For the students that this is the most appropriate intervention, they are able to average seven months' growth over, over four months' time. Reading Recovery, which is only in a first grade intervention, is in nine of our schools. Over time, we've been able to train eighteen teachers, and this year eighty-four first grade students were serves, served. Students discontinuing on grade level after completing Reading Recovery is fifty-six percent, and descubriendo la lectora, seventy-five percent. BARTON Reading and Spelling Program is our tutoring program. It is available in thirty-two of our schools. Over time, over the past two years, we've been able to train six, a high number of teachers, sixty-four general education teachers, thirty-six special education teachers. This year, eighty-four, five students received the tutoring. At the beginning of the year, the students that we targeted for BARTON, one percent was at grade level. This spring, fifteen percent were. BARTON is a tutoring program for students with dyslexia. It has been vetted by the Colorado Department of Education, and it is on the Colorado Department of Education's approved advisory list of interventions. We've also started training teachers and interventionists in Orton-Gillingham to provide the option of small group instruction and classroom universal intervention instruction. As a matter of fact, last week, we finished training our first cohort of grade-level point teachers in Orton-Gillingham. They are excited and ready to begin to use their, their new knowledge with teach, with students next year. Also next year, we'll be able to report out then on the Orton-Gillingham intervention and its use. As we shared, BARTON is on the approved list. It is something that we're using, and we would like to move this to a tutoring program and offer more opportunities for Orton-Gillingham to be within our universal classroom. We're also cross-training every LLI teacher and every Reading Recovery teacher to also have the Orton-Gillingham training so that schools, as they look at their student data, will have an opportunity to be more flexible in the intervention that's being offered. So what will we continue to offer in the way of professional learning? Our kindergarten cadre and our primary cadre. As you know, we've been seeing very promising results in the, the anchor classrooms in those, in the class, in the rooms we've been participating. Also, we have generous teachers who have generously opened their doors to every other teacher in their, in our district. We have now have Learning Lab classrooms. Teachers that have attended the Learning Lab classrooms and principals that have attended them are excited to come back and implement what they have seen in these rooms and are able to explain why they're doing what they're doing. So we plan to continue the lab classrooms. As Dr. Cabrera stated, the English Language Arts cohort at secondary has opened up the doors of our secondary teachers. They are using a literacy instructional framework of reading and writing workshop model, and we're seeing growth there as well. We've also started dyslexia awareness trainings two years ago, and every time that we have held a session, it is full. Our teachers are glad to have that opportunity available to them. We will plan to continue to offer those awareness sessions as well. In response to another one of the questions that was forwarded to the board as to why are we continuing to do some of what we're doing? Each year, as data is, our data is analyzed, we have made adjustments for our continuous improvement of our programming. And even though we are exceeding some national norms, we know that we're not satisfied, and we plan to extend our work with administrators, teachers, and expand our intervention options for students. So as we move into next year, we will continue with the approaches that I've just shared. And as, as a full staff, we've been investigating and making decisions based on what is feasible and have the capacity to implement next year and are making plans for future years. We're expanding the cadres in the lab classrooms. We are continuing with our ELD collaboration. Next year, ELD is, English Language Development is shifting to a co-planning, co-teaching model. So, Richard, when you talked about what shifts or why, why, where are we, when are we making, going to be making shifts in ELD instruction? This is an example of looking at data and saying, we need to look at programming. So literacy will continue to support the ELD department as it shifts to the co-planning, co-teaching model. With special education, we'll continue and increase our collaboration there. In past years, special education's focus has been on compliance as it needed to have been and still does, but they've restructured to have an instructional director that will work side-by-side with the literacy department representatives to ensure that we have cohesive, coordinated instruction and that our special ed teachers are receiving special education Orton-Gillingham program, program-based training. And we're also looking to, we hope, to be able to have the funding to adopt materials for our special education teachers. As I shared earlier, well, let me go back to the K-five materials adoption. We're also hoping to have materials that cover, provide guidance to all teachers K-five in all of the components of reading. Our, our teachers have come from a top-down model where our focus and their skill and their comfort is on comprehension and on vocabulary development. We need materials and we need more training so that they're comfortable with instructing in all of the components, including phonological awareness, phonics, and fluency. With our, as I shared, we just finished training our first cohort of grade-level dyslexia point teachers using the, on Orton-Gillingham model. And the teachers are excited. We are going to be able to have a point teacher in kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade in six of our schools. As we have been talking about that with schools and teachers have been getting excited, other schools are looking to come on board as well. Along with that, we're doing the cross-training for LLI Reading Recovery to use the Orton-Gillingham model. At secondary, our shifts and what we're keeping, we're keeping the ELA cohort. Our focus is going to shift more into differentiation, being able to look at, again, multiple forms of data to plan for students, whole group, small group, and independent at a secondary level. The Read Act is moving into our middle level, so we will have what we are calling building read teams. And that will consist of a counselor, an interventionist, a language arts teacher, a teacher from a different content area, and the, the administrator, and as needed, based on the student, the English Language Development teacher and/or special ed teacher. They will be going through trainings on how to collaborate together, how to analyze the data, how to plan for instruction, and how to monitor student growth. We hope to be able to add more data for more of our grades as we continue to move the Read Act forward. Another part of the budget that we are, we are hoping to be able to use and implement is to provide middle-level interventionists with strat, multiple reading strategies and applying those, and an Orton-Gillingham-based training. Within our UIP for next year, we have shared that we want to see, look, consider literacy in all content areas. So we'll be gathering baseline data for all secondary teachers, all secondary buildings and how content area reading is taught. BVSD wants to work with the dyslexia parent group and other stakeholders to make meaningful changes within our district. Taking initiatives to scale in a large district like ours takes time, collaboration, training, and funds. We're working on all of these aspects to make the changes necessary to positively impact all students. Again, thanks for the opportunity to provide the information about our BVSD literacy programming.
Thank you. Board members, questions, comments? Lot of information. We appreciate the overview. Tina?
Yeah, thanks for all the information. On the BVSD top three and then the following slide that spoke to the layered continuum of supports, how, you mentioned that these are newer concepts. How new are they?
The, let me go there. The continuum, the MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, has been a focus for this school year. Last year, the expectation for schools was to complete a survey on where they believe they were in, in having multi-tiered layered system of support. And this year, they've had, they've created, each building has created an MTSS building team that has gone through some trainings. That still needs to be, that information still would need to be disseminated across the staff in each of the buildings.
If I could just interject, as you recall, multi-tiered systems of support is a strategy of the strategic plan. And so we've actually spent the last eighteen months pulling the teams together for each school. So this is certainly inserted as, as a, an active use of MTSS process.
And so, and then next year, is it fully implemented or is it partially implemented, the MTSS?
For MTSS? I, I guess I'd say it's in progress. I guess I'd say it's in progress. I mean, we have all the teams now. So the next part is the actual, I'd say, implementation of it. And I wish at this point that Dr. Messier was here, because she's one of the tri-chairs of the work that's been going on. But I think that what we got grounded, the first year, you might recall, was really an awareness for each folks to begin to have an understanding of what multi-tiered system support was and the intent behind it and how it was moving away from RTI or reading. Response intervention, excuse me, as a broader response for all kids. And this year was a formation of teams and beginning of initial training around it. So the fact that with literacy, we see how it makes the connect and trying to reach our more kids with the different levels of support.
And what we see as a high value is that we don't have fifty-five different schools with fifty-five different RTI or MTSS systems. This year's focus has really been trying to come to common agreements about what we would want to see in all schools. So it isn't based on which school, as to what type of support you would be receiving. Your other question about the framework. The framework in this form was new this fall. Before that, we did not have the foundational skills as identified and as very specific components within. We've put those in there to support teachers to be able to understand that those skills need to be embedded throughout the full literacy block.
And then I wanted to ask about the using iReady as a first way of identifying some characteristics that might be described as dyslexic. You mentioned the, looking at the twenty-fifth percentile. But I had thought you'd also be looking solely at the phonological and the phonetic pieces separately. So a child could get seventy-five percentile but score low in the other bucket and then still qualify for a dyslexic intervention.
Correct. And so that's when I was sharing about the assessment component, that one of the things that we want to help teachers to do is to better analyze the iReady data. As I was sharing right now, that teachers are using it more for what's the score, what's the achievement level, and looking for growth when they test three times a year. What we want to do next year is to better be able, for all teachers, to be able to go into and do the diagnostic analysis. And part of that diagnostic analysis is to look at all of the components that are tested in iReady, so the phonics, the phonological awareness, the vocabulary and the comprehension, and look at where are students falling within each of those domains and what are their strengths and what are their next steps. With the READ Act, to identify students with specific significant reading deficiencies, that's the twenty-fifth percentile part of the requirement of the law. So we would be doing that, as well as helping teachers to be able to better read the diagnostic data.
And then you'll be able to pull that also centrally, because all that data is available to the district?
Yes.
So you could say, you know, it would have made sense to have identified eight kids or twenty that should get a secondary or diagnostic.
Yes, that's part of the data cycles, here it is. That's part of the data cycles. We implemented data cycles this past year, and what we want to do is improve upon those by having training principals to be able to also have conversations with teachers about how is the student doing in this domain of phonics? How is the student doing in this domain of comprehension? What instruction is being provided? So we're looking at being much more targeted in both the analysis and in the instruction.
You might recall, Board, that in our conversations over the last few weeks, this is an area that we're meaning to grow more skill in. And certainly, part of the challenge is the professional development to understand the data with a closer look, and certainly, we're sensitive to meeting the needs of the kids who are particularly who are evidencing dyslexic characteristics.
And then when you were working with the group of grade-level point teachers on Orton-Gillingham, did any of the teachers express an interest in a separate dyslexia screener? Was that something that you all discussed or that came up?
No, not when I was in the room with the training at the time, and I was there most of the time.
Okay. And I am worried about catching kids early. And so I do share the concern of a lot of parents that it's going to be hard to do that in kindergarten. But I'll be looking in the fall to understand how we've been successful with that particular strategy.
And something else that we're looking at is if we're able to adopt the materials that are focused on the five components of reading, those materials will have embedded assessments within them. So we want to be looking at those assessments to see which one of those will help support identification of students that are at risk for dyslexia.
What's the timeline for that?
For the adoption?
For knowing what the assessments, what their ability might be in helping to diagnose a kid with dyslexia, a student.
We'd like to start in the fall, depending on funding, what's approved for funding. We want to bring in the consultant, if that's something that is going to be something that we are able to continue to plan for. We'd like to analyze the materials in the fall, select materials, and then pilot those, and at that time, look at the assessments that are embedded, as well as looking at other secondary level or secondary screeners that companies are now producing. There are some companies that are producing specific dyslexia-type dyslexia identification screeners. So we want to investigate those as well, and we would like to do that with the consultant and also with our parent group that we collaborate with.
And any way to accelerate that would be great, you know, just because I think there is a sense of urgency around this issue and seeing how that can be piloted, if that makes sense, at what time.
So noted.
All right, thanks so much.
Thanks, Tina. Other questions? Yes, Richard?
When you're doing the READ Act process, especially around identifying kids with significantly reading deficiencies, I believe there's a portion in the READ Act that requires the district to involve and engage parents in developing the READ plan. Is that happening, and is it pervasive? And are they actually providing some great input into READ plans? Or is it something that they're rubber stamping after somebody puts it together? How does that work?
Let me, I'll start it, because I know, I think you submitted some questions around that, and actually responded to them as part of our ROI. So the answer is yes. Parents need to be engaged in the process if their student has been identified of having a READ plan. And so, much like the MTSS process, I'll say, there's several participants, certainly the parents, to understand what the student's deficits might be and what the approach might be, both at the school level and what might happen at the home level. The question you asked is to what extent is it happening all the time? I guess that's my interpretation, would that be accurate? And I think we haven't been tracking that, to be honest with you.
So, yes, what we've put in all of our literature and in all of our trainings is that teachers and parents co-create, is the term that we use, co-create a READ plan together. We do, due to time, have teachers draft that plan, come in, share, revise, make any changes, get parent input on any of the components of it. So they co-create a plan, and then, right now, the system that we use, the Enrich system, doesn't require a parent sign-off. We have contacted the company and have asked for a parent's sign-off, as well as a principal's sign-off and teacher's sign-off, so that we will be able to collect that data. And the company did agree to add that information, add that component.
Could you give me an example of what a READ plan would look like?
Sure. There are multiple components to it. The first section is the assessment data. So why is the student qualifying for a READ plan? So the assessment is chosen, is what was used, and then the scores on that. That would have shown that the student is below a cut score that has been determined by the Colorado Department of Education. After that component, then, the second component is what type of instruction is going to occur within the universal instruction, the general classroom. So general ed teachers are the ones responsible for co-creating these plans. And so they list what they're going to be doing within the gen-ed classroom, within that literacy framework or during content areas time for instruction to support the student's acceleration in reading skills. The next component is setting goals. So there's a component of setting goals. The goals are connected to the Colorado State standards. And so teachers have access to all of those, and they look to see which ones of those the students are going to need based on their identified needs through the assessments. Then there's a component of intervention. So what other, besides classroom, general, universal instruction, what will the intervention component be? And teachers work on drafting that and talk with parents about that. There's also then a parent component of what will happen at home, how parents can support. We have a listing of suggestions that parents and teachers can come up with others as well to put on that. And then there's a summary component that teachers fill out every time that they update and a teacher can go into the READ plan at any time and update it. So the summary part is, is the student going to be recommended for summer school? Will the student be recommended for retention or advancement? What interventions, you summarize the interventions that were used as well.
You know, my work in the community is working with Latino parents, and I've been doing it for a long time, and I've been doing it ever since, well, especially around the READ Act. And one of my first questions that I ask parents is, were you involved in creating your child's READ plan? And not one single parent that I've talked to has been involved in it, and I've talked to many, many, many parents.
That's great information for us, Richard. I will say that what we did when Enrich was putting together the READ plans within the system, we were the ones that pushed to have it, making sure that the Spanish translation was there for our teachers, so that they would have that, so that they would have the opportunity to have those conversations with parents. So I can definitely follow up with principals on why you're getting that type of response, because the expectation is, and again, in all the literature and all the training, is that those are co-created.
So, Richard, one question as a follow-up to you. So tell me the nature of the parents that you spoke with. Were they Spanish-speaking parents? Tell me about a demographic.
The majority are Spanish-speaking parents.
So I think you and I would agree culturally, we would tend to acquiesce to a recommendation from the school. I'm not saying that's right, but I think without having enough knowledge, we don't often assert what we think might be helpful to our child.
Well, I disagree a little bit with that, primarily because the acquiescence is not so much because they don't, the acquiescence is really a part of the fact that they don't have the information that they need to be able to participate in any process in the school system. And that's almost with any of the immigrant parents in the district here or Latino parents. I would say the same thing in terms of ICAPs, for example. You ask any parent in any middle school or high school, have you been involved in developing your child's ICAP? And I bet you that the vast majority have not. So I guess what I'm saying is that we need to do a better job in engaging our families and our parents in the educational process of their kids.
Sure.
And I can tell you that one of the primary reasons why we have this learning gap that we have is the fact that we're not engaging them the way that we should be engaging them. And I really think that's a responsibility of our district, our principals, and our teachers. I think teachers are trying to do as much as they can in order to engage parents. But you have, and you all tell me about this, because you look at a classroom, you look at an Alicia Sanchez classroom, for example, or a Pioneer classroom, or a Columbine classroom, or a UniHill classroom, or any of these particular classrooms where they're highly impacted by free and reduced lunch kids and English language learners and kids with dyslexia, that we don't get them involved. And I think that once we start getting families engaged, really truly engaged in the educational process of their children, we can start seeing our academic achievements improving in this particular district. Because if you look at the numbers of FRLs and ELLs, and you look at some of the reasons why some of the schools are either in the red or in the black or the orange or whatever, it's because a few kids probably are putting them in that particular category. And if we work and target solutions for these particular children and families, that we can do a lot better in our district. Not that we have any red schools, but we can.
Right. Thanks, Richard. Makes sense to me.
Yeah, and I think following up with our Family Partnerships Director is also a next step.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, board members? Tom?
Yeah, I said I had a couple of questions after we passed the data piece. I noticed during your presentation that you talked about the Universal Improvement Plan strategies and principals and teachers conducting data cycle reviews. And I look across the sheet you provided, thanks for that, and disparity across our schools. We have some that have actually, you know, done better, as high as five percentage points, and at the low end, minus thirteen percentage points. So there's fair disparity among schools. And so, I mean, how do we, as a district, assess and adopt practices that some schools are using to other schools to help improve them? I would think the district leadership team should have a role in doing that. And so the question is, what is the role in reviewing and analyzing the data, you know, in the fall and mid-year? And then, what does that team do to come together, to come up with strategies that can be implemented along the way as we see things happening? So, you know, it's not till the end of the year that, oh, we've got a problem, and there's a whole nother year worth of cycle before we address that problem.
So, Tom, I think I'm hearing a couple of different questions.
Yeah, probably quite a few.
I think one of the questions was about the efficacy of the data cycles that are occurring in the building, and how do we know whether it's happening on a regular basis perhaps? And maybe a sub-part is that, to the extent, is there skilled enough, enough knowledge to kind of tease out the data to make good sense of it? Do I get those parts right?
Yeah, but I'm looking more at the top level of our leadership of the district and how they really are involved in a data review, because it appears, at least from the data, that some schools, principals and teachers, are doing that to a good degree, and other schools, perhaps not. You know, I'm just looking at data here. But what I'm trying to understand is how, as a district and with our leadership, you know, which is principals and staff, you know, central administration staff, how does that team get involved in providing leadership and guidance and reviews and corrections, you know, as we go along the year?
So I'll invite Leslie Arnold up here. Talk a little bit about our UIP process, because that's really how we've been driving this, based on our own analysis of district-level data and analysis, let me just say it that way, and some of the key strategies that we have built into it. So that's why data cycles like this exist in the first place.
So it's a very good question, and I think it's something that we also have to analyze as we move forward. And what are the systems that we put in place as an instructional leadership team? And how do we model and look at data? One thing that we've been working on is creating teacher dashboards and principal dashboards for the data so that it's easily accessible and it changes in real time. And we've had quite a few principals actually dig in and use it and start looking at it. I think we have to take it to the next step, though, and really start talking about, what is it that they're looking at and how do you connect what you're seeing into action? I don't know if, I can't speak to the level meetings, the elementary, middle, and high school level meetings. That would be a school leadership conversation, how deep that they go into those types of things and model that for the district leadership team. I know that it's been kind of a high-level presentation this year to the entire district leadership team. It is something, though, to your point, I think, that is needing to go a little bit deeper and further and monitoring some of those cycles being talked about than with teachers and their teams in the schools.
Yeah, I guess, Cindy, I'd like to maybe make that a part of the fall review that I was talking about, to understand how the leadership teams, you know, for, you know, for example, elementary leadership, how they do that together as a group and so on for the secondary as well. I know that our district accountability committee has been looking at, you know, shorter-term assessments and how that can be done and integrated into the cycle. Has our DLT talked about that? I mean, is that in the plan? I mean, is that going to move forward? I mean, it seems like the quicker cycles and the quicker the improvement and quicker we can get there, rather than waiting a year. each time. So can you comment on that?
Well, that's a great question. And I think it ties a little bit into what Richard was saying too, is about getting our parents more involved into this. Um, first, we need a representative from every school to show up to DAC and to, um, participate. And, um, we have not done that. Yes, I know that they have been ac- asking for that. We have not brought, um, consistent data back with, uh, to them, um, for the fall and the midterm cycle. And, um, part of that's because they have a full agenda, part of that's they only meet once a month, but also, um, it, we just haven't done it. So I think it is something that they've been asking for and something that they've been wanting to, uh, kind of get their hands and heads around. And I think that could make them more of an active participant in their buildings. If, if they know some of the trends and they know some of the things that are happening and what we're seeing and maybe kind of an early warning component as well, they could then maybe work a little bit closer with their building.
Yeah. I know our, our district leadership team meets what, once a month? Is that right?
Yes.
And is, is that one of the agenda items? And if not, maybe should it be?
On DAC specifically or on data cycles?
On our reading assessment and, and corrections.
Um, it, it comes up. It's not a consistent agenda item.
Yeah. I mean, for me, I, I think one of our top priorities is, is having, teaching our, our students to read. Because if students can't read, as you know, it's hard for them to learn other things.
Yes.
And so that has to be one of our top priorities. And I, and I would, my expectations is our leadership team would take that on. I think Sam, you mentioned to me that would be a goal for our district is to have every child reading at grade level. I mean, I don't, maybe you wanna?
I think what you're referencing is my desire to re- review the goals of the school district. Uh, they've been in place for five years and I think it's time for a review. And I personally would like to call out reading proficiency more in the goal. Just a personal opinion of mine, but something I'd like the, the board to look at in the coming school year. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good point. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any other questions or comments? Shelley?
So, um, I too is looking at this chart that has the individual schools. And just looking at the change from two thousand fifteen, sixteen to two thousand sixteen, seventeen? It, it looks like, um, nearly seventy percent of our schools have fewer kids meeting standards this past year than the year before. So the way I count, the twenty-four out of the thirty-five schools, their reading scores are down. So without knowing what the subgroup populations are in these numbers, can you just make a general statement about why you think that's true?
I don't think I can. Um, we just saw this today, to be quite honest with you. So I, we've not had an opportunity to, um, I think, dig deeper, to talk to principals, to talk to school leadership. I think that is, um, a Sandy Riplinger and Robin Fernandez kind of conversation. They are elementary leadership team and, um, that just hasn't made a connection yet with them on this.
It's a reasonable question.
It, it's absolutely a reasonable question.
Yeah. Well, I mean, just what it says to me is that it's not, you know, any one school that's struggling here. It's like the entire district. So it makes me wonder about, you know, the curriculum or the training or the PD or e- either that or our population is so dramatically different from last year that, you know, it's being, it's impacting these scores, which I don't think is the case. Um, but it certainly would be interesting once you get a chance to dive in, if you could maybe come back to the board and, and help us try and understand. Because I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, and thanks for this kind of detail. It's really helpful. So I have a couple of questions about the presentation. Um, at some point, Angel, you said that, um, that LLI was an invention, an intervention that we could afford? Can you say what you meant by that?
When I was introducing the interventions, I summarized, uh, by saying that these are the ones that we were able at the time to afford and offer. And I wasn't speaking specifically about, uh, one in particular. I was discussing that these were the ones we've been able to put in place.
Okay. And that's based on just the general literacy budget that you're given, not anything more specific than that?
So we have the general literacy budget and then when the Read Act came about, we were able to use some funds from Read Act. We needed to purchase assessments and then we also, uh, could per- could use the funds for summer school, for, um, interventions and for, um, not, not for the professional development or not to have, uh, teachers trained, but to pay for the materials for it at that time.
Um, do you happen to know how much we spent on those three interventions? LLI, Reading Recovery and, well, before I ask you that, what, what time period are we looking at on these slides? Is, is this, like, when you say that, um, thirty-two schools and eighty-five students have been served by Barton, are you talking about last year? Are you talking about cumulatively over the history of the district? Or what, what time period are we talking about?
Students served are within the year. For Barton in particular, we've had it, we've used it for two years and trialed, uh, a spring. And over the two years plus the spring, we've been able to train that, that number of teachers and, and provide it in the number of schools.
So this is the sixteen, seventeen school year data, is that correct?
Yes.
Also for LLI and Reading Recovery?
For all of them, yes.
Okay, for all of them, okay. So, so over those, so this is not over two years, this is over one year?
That's correct.
The student served is over one year.
Okay.
The number of teachers trained and the numbers of schools we've been able to go into is over multiple years.
Okay.
And it varies on when the intervention was initiated.
Okay. So if, if we look at just Barton, we see the eighty-five students have been served last year. And assuming that, you know, roughly six thousand kids are dyslexic, that's about one point four percent of our students that we've touched with some sort of dyslexia intervention in the past year. Which, you know, basically leaves out ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of kids who have dyslexia out there. So that, that leads me to be very grateful that you're doing what you're doing with the point teachers in these six pilot schools. But without knowing exactly what the populations of, are of those schools and just taking a guess that it's about three hundred pers- per, uh, school, that's about eighteen hundred students. And if about three hundred and sixty of those are dyslexic, that means that we're now touching about six percent of students who are dyslexic. So even with this pilot, we're leaving out ninety-four percent of kids who are potentially dyslexic. So, you know, what I want to say about that is that I'm happy that we're making progress. Um, it, 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 it seems like, you know, we're moving in the right direction, but it also feels like we're moving at the pace of an iceberg. And that, um, so many kids are being left out of this, you know, attempt here to, to move in that direction. That it's one of the reasons why I want more money and a more comprehensive approach to this. And it seems like you're developing the model to be able to roll this out. So I know we've had some fairly contentious discussions about this topic. And, um, I, I don't think it needs to be. I think what we're asking is that we roll this out quicker and in a more comprehensive way so that we're not losing so many kids. Because as we inch up, we're leaving kids behind every year, um, who have all the fallout effects that we've heard about. So that's why I'm gonna be asking in the budget that we, we put more money towards this. Because I think you're on the right track in some ways. I, I think in, um, I, I totally disagree that the iReady is an adequate screener from what I've learned. Um, and screeners just simply don't take that much time, nor are they that expensive. And so, uh, you know, I, I certainly advocate for that. But, um, I, I like the idea of training LLI and Reading Recovery teachers in, in OG. I think that's a really great idea. And I'm glad that the teachers that you've talked to so far are enthusiastic. I would believe that every teacher in the district would be enthusiastic. Um, so again, I'm, I would just advocate for rolling that out faster. But thanks for the presentation. It was really helpful to understand this whole process better. Appreciate it.
Shelley, if I may interject, excuse me, Sam. As you recall, the proposal that's been provided by staff most recently, there's in excess of four hundred teachers that would be trained in the course of next year. So it'd be a great multiplier. We agree with you. There's, there is a sense of urgency, um, kind of laying it out.
Along, along with the teachers that would be trained specifically in the Orton-Gillingham method, having materials with all of the components of reading, including phonics and phonological awareness, that's available for our teachers across all of our elementary schools, K five, would be of high benefit too, because students are going to receive more targeted phonics and phonological awareness instruction from their general ed teacher as well. So.
I agree. And that's what we priced out in our proposal, that, you know, that's about seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, I think, to, to acquire those materials. So, uh, we're on the same page. It's just how fast can we do this for these kids is where I am.
Hey, Shelley. Uh, any other questions or comments, board members? Kathy?
I'm just struggling with my perception, and I think I'm missing something here, that today was the first day we learned that our students in K through three declined this much? Did?
Say again, sorry?
So it sounds like we just found out today that these students declined this much and somehow we didn't have a sense of this through the whole school year? I, I feel like I'm missing something. Um, so just to follow up on Shelley's question.
Well, you know, I guess, and I guess I, I would say, I would ask Jonathan to speak first.
So, um, so it, it, it is the case that we knew fairly early in the fall that the cohorts had lower scores than the one, than, the, the first graders in a given, in this year had lower scores than the ones in the past year. Um, that isn't, that wasn't new. I mean, that was, this wasn't the first time we, we'd heard, heard that. As far as having scores in spring that confirm that and have gotten every last kid tested and it was to like the last day of school, um, uh, those data do take some, some time to process.
So when we found out in the fall that the students had declined, do we know if we did anything different? Did we do any, any different kind of interventions to address that? I'm just, and I, and I get that we only do this test maybe, I, I'm just struggling with filling in the gaps here?
So Kathy, reasonable question. I mean, so all the schools, certainly with the fall assessment, get their, their own data, just as you see in front of them. And to the extent that, certainly from instructional services and equity and literacy team can come in, we certainly are available, not only to provide some service directly to, to kids, but also to provide the necessary training and coaching for the interventionist. So, to the extent that then schools have some autonomy about the amount of intensity that they provide their intervention in time upon that. So, uh, using a positive presupposition, that they use a data cycle, they, they make some determination. I know this does happen in some of the schools about where they need a point of emphasis is. And they, you know, apply their personnel and time on it. You get a mid-year and you see whether it's making progress. And then you should be adjusting. Now, I can't speak to all of that because it's, I'm not in those level meetings either, Kathy, uh, which I wish I were. But in any case, the intent is to be much more agile, not to wait till the end of the year to say, gee, you know, we didn't put enough attention. That's why we have more than one assessment during the course of the year.
Okay. Thanks, Kathy. Any other questions, comments? Uh, if not, thank you for the presentation, everybody who participated. And, um, we acknowledge the hard work of our staff.
Just, just a quick question. Is there any way that we'd get something earlier in terms of report? I'd like to find out how many kids are significantly reading deficient early on. I mean, the minute you find out, if we could find out, uh, and then what, what's the process in terms of getting these kids?
You're looking for the nicknames in the fall, Richard?
Yeah. Because that, that information you have in the fall, right? Because you do it in the fall.
Right. We could do that. And we have also talked about, um, providing the board with, uh, de-identified in- information and their own kind of data dashboard with that. Um, so it doesn't identify actual student names, but it could look at by school. And it could be also part of an education that when you're out in the schools, you can talk about s- specific things and have data to kind of back up your conversations with principals and teachers and families and those types of things. So we'd like to see that happen as well. Yes, um, schools all have that data in the fall as well. So we should be able to get that to you.
Kathy?
Didn't you say there's a mid-year assessment as well?
Yes.
Didn't Jonathan say that?
Yes.
So maybe we could get that data as well?
We should have more.
So I'm hearing the board wants more frequent checkpoints on this critical issue. Correct? Yeah. All right. Any other questions, comments? If not, uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Look forward to more information in the fall. And, uh, we're gonna take a short break. Look forward to more information in the fall, and we're going to take a short break.[302.27]
Broomfield High Construction started. This is a multi-year project. This will be substantially complete in August of 2018. This was also a deep energy retrofit school where many of the renovations that were completed this summer will improve energy efficiency such as increased insulation on the roof, HVAC improvements, lighting upgrades, and replacement of all the single pane windows out there. In addition, students and staff will return in August to a new secure vestibule, and new interior finishes in the science and math wings. That'll work. We'll all be done by August. Centaurus High School, complicated, multi-phase project. We will be working in that school again all the way through August of 2018. The focus this summer is on the innovation makeover and the humanities wing, language arts, and the girls locker rooms. Construction, the secure entry vestibule, and the music rooms began this summer. However, that will not be completed until this fall. We will continue through the school year with another busy summer in the summer of 2018. Community Montessori is scheduled to be complete this summer with the exception of the office remodel that will extend into the fall, and then the re-roofing of that school which will happen next summer, 2018. So work to be completed this summer includes abatement, a lot of it, new secure entry vestibule, improvements to interior finishes, new unit ventilators and boilers, new lighting, and playground improvements. Again, right now they are sitting at 55% complete. El Dorado, a $10.5 million project. Work has started out there. We are working on the new innovation spaces on the first and second floors, improvements to the interior finishes, roof repairs, new fire alarm, new security systems, and providing an exterior running path. We are also constructing an eight-room classroom addition for space for kindergarten, early education, and the spaces to replace the portable classrooms. The addition will not be completed until the fall of 2018, or until February of 2018. Everything else will be completed this summer. At Pioneer, majority of the work occurred last summer. That project right now is 98% complete. We are finalizing the finished, final touches on that building with the gym floor, carpet replacement, some minor casework replacement. Lewisville Middle School, $5.9 million project, 12% complete as of June. Right now, just the overview of the work that will occur this summer, abatement, roof repairs, intercom and fire alarm system replacement, restroom renovations, creation of a new outdoor learning space. That's how their innovation funds are being used. And as you know, the synthetic turf and track was completed out there last summer. So that will complete this project in August. If you've driven by Manhattan Middle School, that has changed drastically in the last few weeks. We put up a gymnasium. That gymnasium, as you can see, was up in a week, and those are precast panels. So construction of the new main gym and the locker room, Mono at Manhattan is shown in the photo. The precast structure was erected in a week, as I discussed. Interior renovations, including the library transformation to the innovation space, are underway. Audio enhancement in each classroom will be installed by the end of August. Courtyard renovations are in progress, improving the outdoor learning environment out there. And then additionally, mechanical controls and lighting are updated to improve the energy Ryan Elementary, $3.7 million project. As you see here in the photo, this is the ECE playground. Ryan Elementary includes existing space to create classrooms, preschool, and kindergarten, expanding the preschool playground and providing new equipment, energy efficiency improvements, security upgrades, new fire alarm system, as well as conversion of two classrooms on the north side of the library to an innovation lab. On the outside of the buil- building, the big parking lot will be renovated to improve traffic flow, and the red Mansford roof, Mansard roof is being replaced with a new blue Mansard roof, if you've seen that one. So as stated in the April updates, between June and the middle of September, end of September, we plan to put about $120 million in place with those 14 schools that we just went through. So that wraps up our presentation. We've got a lot of work in place. Our team is doing a fantastic job. But any questions?
Appreciate the overview, Rob. Board members? Kathy?
Just have a silly question. And Centaurus, what's an argo restroom?
Argo, I've never gotten a full description of what argo is. That is where their auditorium, their athletics, that wing, if you've got your main entrance, and then the argo entrance is to the south.
I'm just making one.
Oh, yes. It is to the south. We're renovating that whole area to get into the gym. The gym will be renovated in 2018. We're doing some minor improvements, or we're replacing those restrooms, renovating those restrooms entirely, doing some minor improvements to the auditorium.
So I just want to say thank you for doing this. I can't imagine, every time I drive by the schools, there's so many moving parts. And so I think it's, it's really impressive. And I'm hoping that we can schedule, I've said this before, a tour.
Yes.
Because I think it'll be great, not till you can breathe a little bit more, but sometime in the fall maybe. So thank you for all your-
After the first day of school.
To you and Don, thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Other questions, comments? Yes, Jenny?
Could you please say something about the garden at Emerald, which I know we've all heard a lot about?
Eisenhower.
Eisenhower. Pardon me. You're right. Emerald's fine. Emerald's fine. Eisenhower.
So the garden at Eisenhower, no plans have been made to relocate the garden at Eisenhower. I can assure you of that. We are working with the design team to leave those gardens right where they're at. We have, ECE will be put on the southeast corner of that building. That's where it will be placed. We want to make sure that parking is close to ECE. So we need to get a sidewalk into that main entrance. We believe we can work around those gardens. So that's how we've instructed the design team. We will do everything we can to make sure that happens. So we will report back on that.
I know lots of people who will be removed.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Other questions, comments? All right. We look forward to touring the buildings in the fall. Thank you, Rob. And thanks to your team. Next on our agenda, action items, consent grouping. These include 8.1 personnel items, 8.2 approval of minutes, June 13, 2017 regular meeting, 8.3 approval of minutes, June 19, 2017 special meeting, 8.4 approval of minutes, June 20, 2017 special meeting, 8.5 approval of minutes, June 21, 2017 special meeting, 8.6 data management, Inc. contract for district-wide time capture system, 8.7 intent to participate in the coordinated election on November 7, 2017, and 8.8 ZAO over-poll agreement. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping?
Sam?
Yes.
I'd like to pull 8.1 personnel items.
All right. 8.1 is polled. Any other items board members would like to pull? Hearing none. Are there items board members would like to discuss? Hearing no discussion. Laura, could you please call the vote on the remaining items in the consent grouping?
Yes.
Benford.
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gabhart.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Passed, approved. Yes. So Tom, 8.1 personnel items.
We want to deal with that now?
Well, you've polled it. So typically, board members explain, you know, why they would want to pull the item.
I mean, I'd like to take action on it. Do you want to do it now, or do it later?
Well, typically, I think if an item is polled from consent, we discuss it immediately after. Melissa?
It's the bottom of the action.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, so, thank you. So after the next three, we'll bring it back?
That's what. I can do it now if you want to.
No, it's my mistake. Got out of order. So we'll move to the standalone action items on our agenda. First one is 9.1 ratification of meet and confer process between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley District Leadership Team, professional technical employees, and non-represented employees. So I need a, is there any, I need a motion, I guess, to put that, bring that forward? Not hearing a motion. Tina?
I'll let someone else do the motion.
Okay.
So I'm willing to do the motion, but can, do we have to, do I have to do this motion, or can I move that we approve, that we separate this and approve the compensation package?
Yeah, I need to bring the motion and get it on the table.
Okay.
Motion from Jenny, second from Kathy. Discussion. Tom?
Yes, Sam. I'd like to move that, that Agenda I 9.1, which is that ratification of meet and confer process between Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley District Leadership Team, professional and technical employees and non-represented employees, be amended to remove the resolution, which is 17-18, and remove the handbook, the Boulder Valley Public Schools District Leadership Team Professional Technical Terms and Conditions of Employment Handbook. Then add that the board directs our interim superintendent to perform a thorough review and update of this handbook, including salary market analysis by reputable outside firm, with written copies available for board review. And then the interim superintendent will recommend an updated revision of the handbook to the board, including salary ranges. And as for the third attachment there, I also would move that we modify the COLA and STEPS to add a minimum insurance monthly district contribution of $546 to the health fund to that.
Okay. Do you have a printed copy of the motion you can give to our board secretary?
I most certainly do.
Thank you. And then we'll, we'll have, that motion requires a second, first of all. Second from Shelley. Discussion. Kathy?
I just want to make sure I understand that by doing this, what we are doing is continuing forward the terms and conditions that were already in place. So we aren't without them. We're just going to carry forward what's already in place. Is that a fair statement of where we are?
That is my understanding. Melissa, if we don't approve this particular version of the handbook, the previously approved one will remain in effect?
Right. With the amendment that Tom just did, which is the second attachment, correct? The STEPS, COLA, and health insurance?
Yeah. My understanding, and I'll ask our staff attorney to clarify this, is this motion intends to pull the employee handbook out of what we're approving so that it can be reviewed and revised. But we will be approving the compensation package for these employee groups. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion or questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Tina?
Is the motion from the last meeting still out there, or is that one just dead? Because I didn't, because we could have moved to bring that back, even though it's not the same as this one.
I think ultimately we tabled it at the last meeting.
Yeah, we tabled it. So it doesn't need to, we don't need to do anything with it, right?
I don't think so.
You would end up, you're right. You would postpone the whole action.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I would just make a comment, too, that if, if a committee is formed to, if this becomes a larger product, and project in a committee is formed, I would like to discuss having a board member be on that committee in the fall.
So just to summarize what we're doing, we're, we're moving to approve the compensation package, but not the employee handbook, pending review and revision. Everybody clear on that? Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none. Laura, could you please call the vote on the motion?
Benford.
Yes.
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gabhart.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you, board members. The next item on our action item list is 9.2 adoption of the 2017-18 budget. Dr. Stevenson, is there a presentation? I believe there is.
Yes. I would like to introduce Leslie Stafford and Bill Sutter, and they will present, and then we'll move forward on adopting a budget for the coming year.
Thank you. Hi, Bill.
Good evening. Dr. Stevenson, President Fuqua, members of the board, have a brief presentation So this is the 2017-18 proposed budget for the general operating fund. The details that will go through, the other funds which are also attached to the agenda item are unchanged from the presentation back on May 23. So this is really walking through the changes to the proposed budget and what is now put forward as the superintendent's recommendation for the budget for adoption for next year. First up, we have a quick review for a reminder of the viewers for the priorities that were provided, the framework within which the budget was developed, six priorities we've been working within for quite some time now. On the resources side, there's no change in any of the resources, including expected beginning fund balance, unspent reserves, and revenue. So this is all exactly what we talked about last time in May. On the expenditure side, this is where we have some changes that have been incorporated into the total proposed budget at this point. And so I will walk through those individual pieces and describe them in a little more detail. So the first line, staff is an increase relative to elementary counselors, increasing the program for that. The next line, $300,000, that's PD, textbook, and materials. Those are ongoing resources for non-staff areas. And then one-time expenditures, $900,000. That's mostly in the area of staffing reserve, PD, and textbooks. So now we're going to dig into a little more detail of what those changes are. This is broken up again into those one-time and ongoing expenses that had been built into it. So we removed from the budget the Paso and El Paso programs. We increased the staffing reserve. We included an increase to the phonics and phonological awareness, professional development, fifth grade English language arts textbooks, superintendent search, and funding for the athletic working group. So just shy of $900,000, tying back to that previous slide. Next up, we have the ongoing expenditures. So this first line item is the elementary counselors. That's three additional FTE to add to the seven that were included in the previous version of the budget. We have some professional development associated with that, as well as ongoing funding for phonics and phonological awareness materials, and additional funding for textbooks. This is ongoing funding, but for the first year it will be used for the fifth grade English language arts textbooks. Summarizing the ongoing, the transfers, so there are no changes to any of the transfers to other funds included in this new updated proposed budget. The reserves went up by a little bit as we spent a little more money. We had to increase reserves for tavoring contingency. So total uses have increased 1.6 million. The ending balance dropped by 1.6 million. So now we have a budgeted ending fund balance of $900,000. A few highlights to talk about in the, that are included in this overall budget. So maintaining programs and services, adding classroom teachers and support for student growth, provide salary, staff salary and benefit increases, implement elementary social emotional support with 10 counselors, opening of the metal art school, implementing class size caps in 10th, ninth and 10th grade math and language arts, adding 2.8 million for textbooks and learning materials for K-5 language arts, adding $1 million to expand services and reduce case loads in special education, $800,000 for support PD materials for phonics and phonological awareness, $500,000 to increase maintenance, custodial, and operational services, and a $2 million staffing reserve for any impacts relative to the federal budget that is occurring at this point in time, enrollment and anomalies that are, may occur. Next steps moving forward. So in September, we will have our year-end balances. We actually don't get our final revenue for the current year until about August 10. So we're still into next year before we get this year finalized. So it's September when we get those year-end balances, carryover, one-time resources that we can discuss further. November, the October student count, although it happens on October 1, it's not finalized until the first couple of weeks in November. Then in December, we have the certification of mill levies. And in January, we plan to have the revised budget come for adoption. That is the end of the presentation at this point.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Tina?
I just wanted to make a couple question, or a couple comments. So, so one of the comments is about our ending fund balance. So we've had some discussion, if you haven't been at our work sessions, about whether to spend down the remaining $900,000. And my personal opinion is that we need to have some flexibility mid-year to address other concerns that might come up. And one of them might be that after we go through the process with the consultant on dyslexia, that we need more funding. And I would like that process to involve staff and the community. And that's the thing that we can do is allocate money at that point. And I checked with Leslie Stafford, and that's an option. The other piece would be also looking at some of the, and we just saw this in the literacy report, that we're, that we need to make some faster progress with our FRL and ELL and literacy. We received a report on, from Northwest Education Northwest, and who knows? I don't know what other things might come up that we want to address. So I like the idea of having some flexibility as we learn more and work more. And the other pieces that you saw that two items were removed, Paso and El Paso. And this was a really, for me personally, a really difficult process because the items were placed in the budget without discussion prior. So it's really interesting that we're in a position where we're removing things from a budget that weren't discussed as a board first. That is a challenging position. And one of the issues is that it is not a reflection of what I believe about the Paso and El Paso programs. They're really valuable programs in the community. I think there's more work to be done to understand what the partnership might look like with the district in this case. And there's not a lot of information around that piece, so I'm uncomfortable keeping those in the budget, but I wanted to address them.
Tina, other comments or questions for Bill? Tom?
Yeah. So I noticed that the attachments here changed from earlier and today. There were more attachments. And I had found some discrepancies that I had questioned about, you know, the attachments. So I don't know how applicable this is. But there was a resolution 1714. I don't see it here now anymore. But under the general operating fund, use of the beginning fund balance, phonics and phonological awareness target instruction was listed at $650,000. But then under the DB general fund, it's listed at $750,000. So I wanted to clarify which it is.
Wait, Tom. I have a 17. I do, too.
What happened?
I have a 17.
That's what I see right there. I don't have it. Well, anyway, I'm glad it's there, but it's not showing up on my board docs, which is-
So you're missing use of beginning fund balance resolution 17-14?
Yeah.
The last, it's the last, okay. Yeah, that's what I have.
Tom, you might have to log in and log out and log back in to board docs. Maybe that'll-
Okay. I just clicked on it and clicked back on it. It popped up. It wasn't there. So we had a technical malfunction.
Technical glitch, yeah.
But the question still exists. There's a difference between the resolution and a DB operating fund. And so one of those is appears to be wrong, unless I'm misreading it. Well, under the resolution 1714, it lists phonics and phonological awareness target instruction at $650,000. But under the summary of one-time uses of funds and policy DB calculation, it listed as $750,000. So one says $650,000 and one says $750,000.
Does it, does it say $200,000 for professional development? So half of that is for dyslexia.
Oh, so the, so the resolution here doesn't quite match what the DB calculation shows, at least in the listing.
The, the-
Because one says professional literacy, professional development literacy, $100,000. I see where you're going. The other one says professional development, doesn't, just solicit $200,000.
Yeah. When we originally had talked about this, it was $200,000 for both ELD and dyslexia or phonics and phonological awareness. And so those were sort of split apart over the course of time. And so the, the total dollar amount is accurate as far as what's being used. And it is for professional development. But as far as, and the intent all along has been that it's professional development for that $100,000, half of that, $200,000 is for-
Okay. So what you're saying, both are accurate, but one just spells it out more clearly.
They're accurate but different.
Yes. So that's what's confusing to me.
Yes.
Okay. As long as I got the floor here, I have another question. I, in reviewing this today, let me find my notes here. And I sent a message at the end of the day, and I apologize for not catching this sooner. But I'm confused about the, basically the, you know, the ERP software, which is Enterprise Resource Planning software. It seems like there's been a number of things that, that I don't understand. So back in the, in the beginning fund balance resolution here, the one I referred to earlier, it says there was a $1.3 million identified project relating to that upgrade. Okay. But yet in, in, when was it, last December, there was, you know, in the package that came to the board, I sent this to you earlier, hopefully you had a chance to look at it, it says the ERP system was $1.5 million required system upgrade. And, and that was to come out of the operational levy from year one. So the question is, did that not come out of the levy, or is this different money? And what does it do? Because we also approved in, in January 2016, a ongoing through 2019 cost of a little, little more, a little less than $550,000 for that software. So I'm trying to add this all up and figure it out.
The $550,000 is the annual maintenance and cloud hosting-
Got that. I knew that.
Yeah, on the, the program itself.
Right.
Just like we pay for Microsoft licenses and Google licenses and things like that. The $1.5 million to do the upgrade is just the standard process of doing a major upgrade to the system where you have to move from one version to the next. We're currently on version 10. We're going to a version 11. They have a whole new suite for their HR system that we don't have implemented right now. And that's their system going forward. So we kind of have to implement it, or we will start falling behind.
Yeah.
And so that's, that set aside of $1.5 million that is now in this year's budget, or this next year's budget, the plan is to go out for an RFP in about August to start seeking some consultants to help us with that upgrade.
So you're telling me that $1.5 really wasn't spent this last, this year?
Correct.
Like, I understood it to be spent this year from this, it was year one of the operational, which we were in year one. So, so we really didn't spend the $1.5 million. And so now we're, we're using it here.
We set it aside as a one, we knew it was a one-time expense.
Okay.
And so in that first year, we were able to capture those dollars and say, okay, we're going to set that aside. And then we could use those ongoing dollars, that additional $1.5 that shows up again in the next year, to fund other things for the, as we've built this budget. That was all detailed.
So I guess I still understand. So what is the 1.3?
It's a carryover item.
So the 1.3 is a real amount? 1.5 was just an earmark?
No, it should be, it is 1.5. It's just the calculation of how the, how you have to make the calculation to comply with the statute of whether you're using fund balance comes out to a dollar amount that you have to say is this is the amount that we're using. The budget is actually 1.5 million.
Okay. But, so, so my concern was it looked like it was double booked, 1.5 back then, and now another 1.3 now. But what you're telling me, it's, it's the same dollars that weren't spent?
Yes.
Okay.
Set it aside, hold it, knew that we were going to need it. We've been doing the planning for a few months, putting together a five-year plan on what this upgrade is going to look like over the course of time. And knowing that we were going to jump into that beginning early this fall.
So it was part of the eight and a half million that was left over, or will be left over from this year?
No, the eight and a half million's in the general fund. That is exclusively in the operational fund.
I guess I'm still unclear on this. Because what we're talking about tonight, right, is 1.3 million in the general fund is, is left over. No?
No, it should be in the operational fund.
Oh, is it? Okay. So it's a transfer, is what you're saying, from the general fund?
No, it's sitting there. It's, was in the fund. It was budgeted in the fund in this current past year. It was unspent. It's being carried forward. It was unspent. It's being carried forward and budgeted in the next year as a one-time expense.
Okay. So it wasn't in the general fund. So it's not really part of the eight point five million left over?
Nope.
Okay, that's what I was unclear about.
Totally separate.
Okay. I guess I'd need to get my calculator out and understand it. But, all right. Thank you.
Appreciate the question. Appreciate that Bill is here to answer it. Other discussion, board members? Shelley has an amendment to offer, but in order to do that, we'll have to move the budget first. Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead, Shelley.
Can you say more about the technology fund? It's like one point one million dollars. Using one point one million of the Beginning Fund balance for equipment for the One-to-Web pilot program. Can you be more specific about what aspect of the pilot program that's being used for? And how we're defining pilot program?
Andrew probably could provide a lot more details on the rollout of the pilot.
President Fuqua, members of the board, Dr. Stevenson, happy to answer that question. We're bringing on seven new schools into the One-to-Web program this coming year. As you know, you approved a forty-five dollar fee that only covers a quarter of the cost. And so the funding is then used to buy the device upfront. So we basically call it the seed money. And that seed money is used. Eventually, we'll get the entire program seeded, and then it'll be sustainable.
What schools are we bringing on?
So Arapahoe Ridge High School, New Vista, the feeder schools to the two high schools that were currently doing one for web. So that includes Angeline, Aspen Creek, Broomfield Heights, Nederland, and Boulder Universal. Is that six or seven? Seven.
Wait, we still have Boulder Universal?
It was Boulder Explorer.
So those are...
Yes, we do Boulder. Boulder Universal is the online program.
Yeah. I went to their graduation this year. We still have them.
Yeah, Boulder Explorer, I think is a program that is currently not active.
So I'm sorry, were those middle schools that you listed?
They're high schools and middle schools.
And middle schools. Okay. Well, I'm not, I'm still not clear that we've, we've approved that kind of rollout for One-to-Web. Just because we approved the technology fee does not mean that we approved a massive rollout of One-to-Web before we've had a chance to discuss this at a technology session or a student data privacy session. So I'm not, I'm not comfortable with doing that. So...
So, okay, I, I understand your perspective. That was not our understanding. We, the programs are moving at this point. So if you want to stop for those schools, I would encourage you to make a motion and to stop the progress, because it is going. And the biggest benefactors of these are the kids in East County that cannot afford devices.
Well, I know that's always the argument, but there's never the other side of the argument, which is the cons of this whole thing.
Sure. Okay.
So, and we've been around and around about this. I'm not sure that I want to hold up progress when it's already, or, I wouldn't call it progress, but hold up this initiative if it's already started. But I certainly want to have a discussion about this. And I would think that we would have had it before we did this, given the level of concern, you know, about these programs. So I'm not going to make an amendment right now for this purpose, but I really do want to have a discussion about the rate at which we're rolling out these programs, who we're rolling them out to, what privacy policies are in place to control the information going out of those Chromebooks. You know, all the concerns we've discussed before. So I'm glad there's a student data privacy session coming up. I believe we have one scheduled, right, Sam? So this will be part of that whole discussion. So I'm just really concerned that we didn't talk about this before we did this.
Thanks, Shelley. Other questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I lost the amendment, but I, you know, just wing it, and maybe everyone can help me.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to move the budget first. But yes, I appreciate you letting us know you have that amendment. Kathy?
So Andrew? Sorry, if I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
I didn't think we were rolling out to middle schools, so that was news to me.
Um, so...
So I just, I'm fine rolling that into the discussion we have with Shelley. That, it was just a surprise. Because I remember the middle schools were here, and we said we didn't have the bandwidth to, a different kind of bandwidth to roll them out to the middle schools.
Okay, so the, the approval was for fifth through twelfth grade. That was the, the One-to-Web fee approval. When Fairview and Boulder High decided not to go this year, it freed up the bandwidth. And so we went to the middle schools of the feeder schools, or the middle schools of the two One-to-Web high schools. And they were, they were more than ready to go. And so that is the, the movement that we're making. There are other middle schools that wanted to go, and we stopped that progress. And we stopped it because we were concerned about our own ability to do the proper professional development beyond the communities that have already taken on One-to-Web, Broomfield and Lafayette, to be more specific.
Broader discussion, which we will.
Okay, thanks, Andrew.
All right.
Other questions for Bill? If not, I need a motion. Kathy? Motion, that motion is to adopt the twenty seventeen eighteen budget. Need a second?
Second.
Second from Jenny. Further discussion? Or at this time, Shelley, you could offer your amendment?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we amend the proposed two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to include the previously discussed allocation of dyslexia funding in the amount of one point two million dollars for screening, awareness training, structured literacy interventions, and professional development.
And we'll give our board secretary a moment to capture that and read it back. You're not done?
Yeah. The funding would come from the existing ending fund balance. And would be dispersed as part of a collaborative effort between the district and the community with the assistance of a consultant, an agreed-upon consultant. Okay.
So that concludes the amendment?
I'll second it.
Second from Tom?
Shelley, do we have a clear writing?
Sort of. I move that we amend the proposed two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to include the previously discussed allocation...
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Well, yeah, I just typed. It's kind of in shorthand, but...
Had a technical glitch. I think she had it ready, but it disappeared.
Yeah, I did. It disappeared.
So bear with us, folks.
Because I can never get on this network.
Get an accurate record of the motion.
To move to amend... Collaborative.
I tried to send you this. That's why I lost it, because I'm not connected to it now.
The funding would come from existing ending fund balance?
From existing funds, and would be dispersed as part of a collaborative effort between the district and the community.
Thanks, Shelley. Thanks, Laura. Could you, could you read it back now?
I'll read it back.
Thank you.
Okay. The motion is to move to amend the proposed two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget to include the previously discussed allocation of dyslexia funding in the amount of one point two million dollars for screening awareness training, structured literacy intervention, and professional development. The funding would come from existing ending fund balance, and would be dispersed as part of a collaborative effort between the district and community with the assistance of an agreed-upon consultant.
Proper motion with a second discussion? Tina? Yeah, go for it. Go ahead, sorry.
Does it make sense to clarify that we're talking about adding an additional four hundred thousand? To the eight hundred that's already in there?
Hmm.
Is that right? Is that what you're...
That's what you're trying to do, right?
Okay, okay.
Do I need to read that into the motion?
Hmm, yeah.
An additional four hundred thousand to the eight fifty?
To add an additional four hundred thousand instead of the one point two million.
Okay. Okay, the motion is to move to amend, to propose, what, to move to amend the proposed two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to include the previously discussed allocation of dyslexia funding in the amount of, by an additional amount of four hundred thousand dollars.
Right, you have seven fifty in there?
Four fifty and ongoing, so eight hundred total. So you want it to be four fifty?
Okay.
Okay. To move to amend the proposed two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to include the previously discussed allocation of dyslexia funding in, by an additional amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for screening awareness, training, structured literacy intervention, and professional development. The funding would come from existing fund, existing ending fund balance, and would be dispersed as part of the collaborative effort between the district and the community with the assistance of an agreed-upon consultant.
Thank you, Laura.
Can we just clarify, so Shelley's making the motion, and then there would be a second?
Okay. The, the language has been slightly altered. Need a second?
I'm fine with it.
Second from Tom. Further discussion, Shelley?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that what I said earlier, that there's just a fraction of kids being touched right now who need this service. And this would ramp that up and would be a much more consistent and comprehensive, comprehensive approach to addressing these kids' needs. I'm also concerned that there are districts and states across the country that are being sued for not doing this. There are interventions that have been proven to be effective, and when districts don't use them, they can be held liable. And VBSD right now is not doing what it could potentially be doing to help these kids. So I think we could be potentially at legally, at legal risk like some other districts are. I don't think that VBSD is in a, any worse position to do this than St. Rain is, for example. And they are actually rolling out this kind of program in St. Rain. We have more funding than they do. So I think this isn't a matter of funding. This is a matter of priorities. And I, I would really like this board to make this a priority. And I, I hear what you said earlier, Tina, about reserving the ending fund balance for this down the road. You know, if a consultant recommends it. That's certainly one approach. But I've also seen things slip that way, and I would prefer to earmark it right now because I'm quite certain that this district can find a way to spend one point two million dollars for this initiative. It's, it's really not that much money. So, you know, other than that, you, you've heard all the arguments for this. I just think it's time for us to step up and address this need in our district.
Thanks, Shelley. Other comments, board members? Tina?
Yeah, thank you, Shelley, for the explanation and for putting the motion forward. I'm still a little, one thing I'm unclear about your motion is, so, and it's, this language is tricky because I don't think you mean the, the seven hundred thousand dollars the way it's pegged to be spent in this... Right. Exactly. Right. So I, because I don't think you would agree that we should spend the money the way the district is recommending for the first seven hundred thousand, and then to spend the additional four hundred and fifty thousand in the way that, is that correct? So, and, and that's where I'm struggling a little bit. So I feel that there, there are two things that I'm concerned about with how we're approaching this issue of dyslexia. And the first is that we have two, the staff and community haven't come together. And one of the, it just concerns me because we need to go through this with some vision of what success looks like that we share. And we have to get to that point, because I don't think our students will succeed if we're not in this together, and we have some common language and some common goals. It, we're probably not going to get there a hundred percent. I don't have that hope right now. But I think we need to make an effort through an external consultant, working with the community, possibly an external moderator, to get to a place where we both are believing in what we're doing, but all of us together. The other piece is that I feel that because this conversation went into the weeds so quickly, we narrowed the scope of what we're talking about. So I feel that it's very, it feels very either or to me. I don't really know, and I don't have the time to go out and find out all the different variations of what could have been done with, to address the issues with dyslexic kids, which is a very urgent need. And I actually don't believe it's my role to go out and do that either. So I appreciate all the advocacy from BV Kid, and I appreciate all the work that staff did. And I think, right now, what I feel most comfortable with is staying with what's a pretty significant commitment of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Norton-Gillingham training, in awareness, in, and to, to address it. And then to look at this collaboratively on a short timeline with an external consultant that is jointly picked by the community and the staff to come up with future recommendations, which might exceed what could be the total of one point two million based on the need that we identified together. And I really feel pretty strongly that we have to get somewhere together because we've bifurcated this, and I don't think we'll be as successful if that's how we move forward. But with all that being said, I really appreciate all the work you've done. I appreciated the discussions. I think they've enriched all of our knowledge of some of the issues in the schools. These, this is not the only issue we have in our schools as we know. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Tina. Other comments? Shelley?
So Tina, I couldn't agree more that the community has to come together with the staff on this in order for this to be effective. And that's why I worded this the way I did. But I also think that, you know, the idea that the consultant could come up with a need for even more money in order to do this, and that that's somehow going to magically appear, it, that would have to wait for an entire, you know, year for us to reallocate money to that effort. Whereas if we earmark this amount right now, we can just keep moving if the consultant decides to do that. If we don't use it, we don't have to use it, but it's there in the budget. And if we don't use it, it can just flow to the ending fund balance again. But at least we've earmarked it for this purpose.
So I'm, I, we have nine hundred thousand dollars in ending fund balance. And I believe that staff would have to come to us to ask us how to spend it. And I don't see there, see any other priorities bubbling up. So I don't see that as an issue. And I'd rather keep it open based on what the consultant has to say. There might be things that we haven't even thought of as a community that are completely different. So that's one, I would rather keep it flexible, commit to the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then move forward from there. I don't know what's going to be needed. So I'm not willing to go above that right now, because staff isn't there. But I'm willing to go there if we can get there together.
Shelley?
Well, I think it's, there's no end to the number of needs that people would spend that money on, that nine hundred thousand dollars on. To say that there's been no identified needs beyond what we've already talked about, just... To say that there's been no identified needs beyond what we've already talked about, just, I mean, that's not accurate. I mean, we would put in more counselors if we could, we'd buy more textbooks if we could, we'd do 100 things if we could. And that's why I'm saying we need to set aside this money. If we don't use it, we don't use it. Nothing's lost. And if we need it, it's there. If we don't do that, we're not going to have the money that we need to implement whatever the consultant does say we need to come up with. So I just don't see the problem with earmarking it and then letting it go if we don't need it versus taking the other approach.
And I'll still say I struggle because I think that we're defining the programmatic elements with this as well. I don't, I'm not there yet. So I would prefer to go through a process for the remaining piece, and I am more comfortable with that personally, and I'd be happy to call this to a vote.
Well, I would, I'm pretty much where Tina is, although I would support continued funding for dyslexia in next year's budget and the year after that. But I do want the staff and the consultant and the community to come together on further recommendations. I applaud the BV Kids. I mean, you made a good case. The board listened. You changed the conversation, frankly, and I appreciate hearing from you. But I'm going to support the staff recommendation this time. Yeah, Kathy?
Just two quick things, just two things Shelley raised. I did get an email that referenced litigation around this, and I did look up the litigation, and it is way different from what we're doing in Boulder. I don't, if I really thought we were at serious risk of being sued over this, it would change my mind, but I've read the complaints. And I've also looked at what St. Rain's doing, and I think we are either in step with or ahead of what St. Rain's doing. So I think we just have to agree to disagree on that, and I'm in line with where you and Tina are on this, so thank you.
Further discussion? All right, Tom. Okay, Richard, then Tom?
Well, I appreciate all the work that BV Kids did in this particular subject because I learned a lot from it. And I agree with Shelley. You know, if we have the funding available and we want to set it aside, we should set it aside. If we're not going to use it come the end of the year, we won't use it. And if a consultant comes in and says, yeah, we need more money, but the money will be there. So I do support the amendment.
So I want to thank all the community members that have, and parents that have come forward to us to talk about this issue and make the board aware. It's a process that's happened over the last several years. And as some of the board may recall, we talked about this last year, and I thought there was money in the budget to do more, but it turned out there wasn't. And quite honestly, I don't think the 1.2 million is enough. I don't think we're doing enough to support not only, you know, our students with dyslexia, but students that also can benefit from structured literacy-type approaches. The, in my experience on the board, there's, you know, not money left over to be found. You know, it seems like when we do the, you know, revised budget, there's not money to be found. I am concerned that, and I think experience bears me out, that it's hard to start anything in the middle of the year. So I'd like to earmark the money now so that we have it. We can use it if the process that Shelley is recommending here with the consultant and the community and staff collaborating comes out to a different amount, then we don't have to spend it. I feel it's probably going to come out to more than that is what will happen. There is a bit of concern about us as a district being able to support that and ratchet it up. However, if we don't do something, then we've lost another year. And that's what really concerns me. And that year are, you know, lives of our students and their learning, and that's something I don't want to risk. We have the money, we have the ending fund balance. Almost every year that I can think of, except perhaps one during the recession, we've had money left over at the end of the year. And I think we need to spend that money now, utilize it to the best that we can for our students, and so I support this for that reason.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions, comments, board members? Hearing none. Laura, could you restate the amendment one more time and then call the vote? Thank you.
The motion is to move to amend the proposed 2017-18 budget to include the previously discussed allocation of dyslexia funding by an additional amount of 450,000 dollars for screening awareness training, structured literacy, structured literacy intervention, and professional development. The funding would come from existing ending fund balance and would be dispersed as part of, as a part of a collaborative effort between the district and the community with the assistance of an agreed-upon consultant.
Shelley?
There's a comma after screening.
With that punctuation?
For screening, awareness training, so, okay. Thank you.
All right. Could you call the vote, please?
Belval. Benford. Fuqua.
No.
Garcia. Gebhardt. Marquess. Myers.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Are there any further amendments to the, that you board members would like to offer to the 2017-18 budget? Hearing none. Laura, could you call the vote?
Wait, so I just want to make sure. Now, we're now moving to approve the budget as presented.
Yeah, because we had that motion initially.
I just wanted to make sure.
Belval.
Yes.
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
No.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you, board members. A good discussion, and I look forward to the 2018-19 budget development process, which we will begin in earnest when we reconvene. We do have the item that was pulled from the consent grouping, that's 8.1 personnel. Tom, you pulled it?
Yes. So I move to table personnel items until such time that the concerns raised to the board during exec session can be resolved.
That is a motion. Is there a second? Second from Shelley. Is there a discussion? All right, hearing none. Could you call the vote on the motion to table the personnel item, sorry, the personnel item pulled from the consent grouping?
Belval.
So we're, this is to table, right?
Correct.
No.
Benford. Fuqua.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
No.
Marquess.
No.
Myers.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Can I move to approve the personnel item?
Yes, you can.
Second.
Tina's moved to approve the personnel items, 8.1, and Jenny has seconded it. Is there a discussion of this motion? Hearing none. Laura, could you call the vote, please? Again, this is a motion to approve item 8.1 personnel items.
Belval.
Yes.
Ben, Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
No.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, board members, I think that'll about do it for our meeting. We will reconvene at our regular meeting on August 8. Of course, we have our quarterly planning session August 15. We'll take a short break for July. Meeting is adjourned.